What's that? Yes, just give you. You got it? Okay. Yes.
And then like right after that.
Yes. Which one now? We run the circuit.
All right, all right, so yes, court reporters here, so we're going to be pre-marked.
Uh, I did.
Okay.
I'm pretty much. Okay, great, thank you.
Say I can move if you need me to.
Oh, that's up to you. Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah. Heard the media all right? We need to see what he gives.
We'll do this chair out of circulation.
I was concerned about that. Basically, on the numbers I was running, we were not able. Yeah. Yeah. He was on. Turned over his head after that and he was. Oh, yeah. I never remember. He was afraid. Yeah, and that's what he said. He said that.
I already have that in my. Is that?
They can't touch him, so he's kind of like.
Yeah, actually.
From what it sounds like, it's actually is too small.
Yeah, that's true. It's probably possible contingency.
Good. Folks, for those who are not aware, we are streaming on YouTube now and throughout the evening. So, like yourself accordingly. Many of you are here with a specific interest in our conditional use here. Many are here for that. Well, I do invite you to, I do invite you to stay the remainder of the evening, but I'm also not only there that a lot of things, a lot of other things to do. It's a definite gray too. Is it leaning gray?
Well, that's, that's totally your decision, buddy.
It's leaning gray, buddy. It's like we're leaning gray, but it's for a painting project here. I struggle with the whole color scheme of anything that I myself.
That's why I decided to use white with nation.
You said white. There you go.
I'm learning.
I don't want to be responsible for such a bad.
Yes, exactly.
You don't see. No, you're not. You played musical chairs last week.
I made that comment too. Why do you should say that? No. Would you like a decent seat, Scott?
I do. Play musical chairs. It's a one-time slot. Musical chairs. Line game, musical chairs.
Scott, would you like a decent chair by chair?
Nope. Try not to squeak or annoy the camera too much. A little oil. Think that squeak will wear. Light.
Oh, yes.
Oh, that's fine. Oh, yeah. The one front's left connected.
You can join the row, sorry.
So someone doesn't sit here. Fall through it in here.
Yeah. Pretty soon, all the way. Can silence your cell phones, that might be helpful as well. You know, with the hearing, the young lady has disappeared. She's a court stenographer. And it just makes us a lot nicer if we're not interrupted.
I'm sure any one of you that can stand. It's also best to make sure only one person is speaking at a time. There will be a point where you might ask, you want to ask questions, or if you're a party to cross-examine the witness. Make sure one person's there at any time, make it as easy for you to take things down word for word as possible. Scott Glitter.
No. Mr. Pittler. Yes, correct. It was, it was, yes.
Please to pledge allegiance to the moment of silence for all may very personally.
I am joined by the United States of America and to their God for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Rose.
Here.
Mr. Pittler.
Here.
Mr. Goode.
Here.
All right. This is your mandate. I'm going to be over you.
Okay, thank you, Chairman. Good evening, this is the time, date, and location advertised for the hearing by the Board of Supervisors of Robinson Township on the application of M3 X-Blow LLC for conditional use approval for a storage magazine facility for the property located at nineteen thirty-three Hopewell Road in the AP Agricultural Preservation Zoning District of the Township. An application for conditional use is governed by Section nine thirteen point two of Pennsylvania Municipalities Planning Code and Section twelve oh eight of the Robinson Township zoning ordinance. In a conditional use proceeding, the use is a permitted use, but the applicant has the burden of demonstrating to the satisfaction of the Board of Supervisors that the application meets specific standards established in the zoning ordinance for the use. The storage magazine use is permitted by conditional use in the AP zoning district under Article four, Section four oh two, C four of the zoning ordinance as amended last April. The Board of Supervisors, in a conditional use proceeding, if it approves the use, is permitted in its discretion to attach reasonable conditions related to the health, safety, and welfare of township residents and certain safeguards attached to the use. The applicant must present evidence and testimony to justify the relief requested. Before we begin the hearing, there are exhibits which we need to place in the record. These have been pre-marked. They have been given to the Board of Supervisors and to applicant's counsel. Exhibit one is a cover letter and application from McNeese-Wallison-Nurk LLC, Attorney General James M. Strong, with, which is a cover letter to the application with the application of M3 X-Blow LLC for conditional use plus attachments to the application, which include a detailed forty-page conditional use narrative as well as other required attachments. For exhibit two is a copy of the public hearing notice, which many of you who are here tonight received and which is also posted at this building and the property, stating the relief requested and the date, time, and place of the hearing and information if you wish to examine the application. Exhibit three is an affidavit of publication from Media News Group, which is the publisher of the Reading Eagle, which is a newspaper of general circulation in Robinson Township, which is a copy of the public hearing notice published in the paper. It was published in the Reading Eagle Digital and Hard Copy Editions on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, and March seventh, two thousand twenty-five. Exhibit four is an affidavit of posting of the property, stating that the property was posted with a copy of the notice and showing a picture of the posted notice. Exhibit five is an affidavit, the, exhibit four was the affidavit of posting of municipal building. Exhibit five is the affidavit of posting at the property, nineteen thirty-three Hopewell Road, with a copy of the posting as well as attached photographs of the posting. Exhibit six is the affidavit of mailing, which is the reason many of you are here, which is an affidavit from Alicia Klein, Paralegal Municipal Park and Cosloff Stout, that parties and interests and surrounding property owners were served a copy of the public hearing notice and attaching a copy of the notice. And exhibit seven is two sets of planning commission minutes from the Department of Planning Commission as the applicant is, as the planning commission is permitted to make a recommendation. The first is February third, twenty twenty-five, which are approved minutes. And there are, there was no recommendation made at that time. And the second are unofficial minutes, which will be considered for approval at the April meeting of the Planning Commission, whereby there was a presentation from the applicant and a recommendation of approval for the applicant. And although this is not being marked as an exhibit because of its size, this will be deemed exhibit eight, which is the Robinson Township zoning ordinance. These are the board exhibits. Next, counsel and any unrepresented parties will need to enter an appearance on the record. Could counsel for applicant present his appearance?
Yes, good evening, James Strong with McNeese-Wallison-Nurk.
Okay, now as read into the record with the affidavit of mailing, adjoining property owners to the applicant's property have been mailed notice of the hearing and are permitted to appear if they choose to do so and be deemed a party. At this time, is there anyone who wishes to enter appearance with the understanding that you do not have to enter an appearance to simply ask questions? But if you wish to testify in support or opposition to the application, or if you want to cross-examine witnesses or put on any evidence or testimony of your own, you will need to enter an appearance, which means giving your name and address on, on the record. So does anyone wish to enter an appearance as a party of the case? Yes, yes, sir, you first.
Colonel James Cobb, COBB, two six six Ammon Road, Alderson. Two twenty-six.
Two, two twenty-six?
Yes.
And, and what is the name of the street again?
Ammon, A-M-M-O-N.
Okay, and that's Alderson?
Correct.
And, and how far away do you live from this site?
Well, I don't know where the site is. I'm adjacent to the property. Order to board.
Do you have any objection?
I guess the only thing, um, maybe we could just.
Yeah, that would help.
These will back you up.
I was just gonna bring it over to.
Yeah, you can't see it without it being close to you.
It's too hard.
So this is, this is the entirety of the property south of Hopewell Road. And then there are two portions of the property, north of Hopewell Road and either side of Cold Run Road. And the facility is down here in the southern portion of the property, near the state game lands. It's running left to right across the.
This is.
No, wait a second. Wait, wait, wait.
Only guy, only one person can speak at a time. We're on the record, so. Well, this is kind of.
Not a very good way for to illustrate the position, like.
Is this.
This is the municipal boundary line and the property line. So this is Robinson Township, this is Kinarbin Township. So if you're in Robinson, you're not on this side. Unless you're up here. House with access to Hopewell. Maybe walk the record while we try and.
I, I think, I think that's fine for you. Is it all right with the Board?
While we sort the paperwork.
Because maybe we can sort out who are necessary and unnecessary parties.
All right, I've given the opportunity to absolutely see that.
So you live in Kinarbin Township?
I live in Kinarbin Township, and I border their property.
So that's the, so that's an adjacent property.
Can you actually mark their names on there so the clarity becomes a little better for everybody just working with?
Yeah, we can as we go through the testimony.
Do you want to get your marker?
Well, let's, let's do this.
Yeah, we'll do it as we go through. But for right now, just to determine whether or not they should be parties.
Right, do you have a marker? Do we have a marker?
I have a pen, but we can.
I would grab a marker.
Okay. So not have an objection to.
Okay, so no objection. Is there, is there anyone else who wishes to enter an appearance as a party? Yes, and who is it?
Chester Stepian, S-T-E-P-I-E-N.
Chester, S-T-E-P-I-N. Where's your.
I-E-N.
I-E-N? And what is your address?
One seven six zero Hopewell Road.
And is Alderson?
Yes.
And how far do you live from the, from the site?
Right across the street.
Across Hopewell Road?
Yeah.
And Mr. Strong, do you have any objection to Mr. Stepian as a party?
Uh, I do not. I see his property.
Is there anybody else who wishes to be a party? Yes.
Michael Karwick, eighteen fifty-four Hopewell Road.
Can you spell your last name?
K-A-R-W-I-C.
And eighteen fifty-four Hopewell?
Correct.
And where is your property?
Uh, immediately across from the main property, between some of the parcels, actually. The closest property to the corner of Cold Run Road and Hopewell Road.
I, I see his property on the exhibit. I don't have an objection.
Anyone else who would enter here? Amanda Karwick. Do you live at the same address?
Yes.
All right, why not, I just, why don't we both as parties? That's fine. And anyone else? Okay, appears, appears that, that there are none.
Just one follow-up question. I see both the, the Karwick's and Mr. Stepian as property owners. I don't have Kyle. Shows Kyle Klein as the owner of the property. To the west. But your name was James Cobb.
Can I say something? Um, yeah, Klein's properties between him. Did you buy Rogers? Yeah, I did, yeah, sorry, we didn't get up and see that.
Are we the guy I waved to?
Probably. The Klins are between us. We don't play for them.
What is your, what is your name, so I can tell you down for the.
Joseph Herzler.
Joseph Herzler, okay.
H-E-R-T-Z-L-E-R.
And you're the property owner?
One of them, yes. It looks like a field, but the, the Klein's in between us. That's why he can't find your name on. Yeah, but not as board.
All right, yeah, all right, let's, let's go, let's go forward with it. All right, all testimony tonight is going to be given under oath of affirmation. The way we proceed is that we'll first allow the applicant to present testimony. Anyone who has entered an appearance may then cross-examine applicant's witnesses and then members of the Board of Supervisors may ask questions of the witnesses as well. At the conclusion of the applicant's case, any other party may put on a case offering testimony and or evidence. Applicant's counsel and others entering appearances would then cross-examine those individuals. And after each witness has been through direct and cross-examination, if anyone not entering an appearance has any questions, they may ask them at that time. Although this is a zoning hearing with the Board of Supervisors acting as the zoning hearing board, and although formal rules of evidence do not apply, we may exclude irrelevant, immaterial, or repetitious evidence. If there are objections made to any evidence, question, or testimony, I'll consult with the board and rule on them. At the close of evidence and testimony, the parties will move their exhibits into evidence, will rule on objections, if any, to the admission of exhibits, and the parties will be permitted to give closing statements. At the conclusion of tonight's presentation, the Board of Supervisors will likely go into executive session to consider the application and the evidence and testimony. If for some reason the Board of Supervisors cannot reach a decision, we'll advise you of the time and the place when that decision will be made. But otherwise, you can expect, at least you can expect a public vote and verbal decision tonight. The final written decision signed by the Board of Supervisors will be issued within forty-five days of the final hearing. And a copy of the final decision will be mailed to all parties at the address given tonight, or in case the applicant, written on the application. Does anyone have any questions about procedure? All right, before we get started, could the applicant's counsel identify the applicant's witnesses? And then they'll be sworn collectively.
Sure, thank you. I have three witnesses with me tonight. First is Keith Grubacher. He is with M3 X-Blow, the applicant. Next is Adam DePaul, also with M3 X-Blow, the applicant. And then Larry Grabowski with C two C Design Group. If you want, I'll pull a stand, I'll swear again at one time.
So the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and I'll think about the truth to help you, God. You proceed when you're ready.
Trying to find a spot where everyone will be able to see this. My block a little bit, I apologize. So again, good evening. My name is James Strong, I'm an attorney with McNeese-Wallison-Nurk, here on behalf of the applicant, M3 X-Blow LLC. I mentioned the three folks that are here tonight with me that will be testifying. Keith Grubacher and Adam DePaul with M3 X-Blow, and then Larry Grabowski with C two C Design Group. M3 X-Blow LLC has leased a portion of the property of nineteen thirty-three Hopewell Road for a proposed explosive storage facility. The property is approximately two hundred and thirteen acres, and it's owned by the Herzlers, some of whom are here tonight with us. The property is in the, sort of the far southeast corner of the township. It's located in the township's agricultural preservation zoning district. And the majority of the parcels to the south and southeast of the proposed facility are located in the state game lands. So we're, we're down in the, in the very southeast corner of the property. We have worked closely, as the folks on the board know, with the prior township solicitor, the planning commission, the Board of Supervisors to amend the zoning ordinance to permit a storage magazine facility, which is this proposed use in the agricultural preservation zoning district. That amendment to the zoning ordinance was approved by the board back in April of last year. So following that amendment, we worked on the plan, prepared the application, and submitted the application in January of this year. And that's what's before the Board of Supervisors tonight for this conditional use hearing. So the first request in the application is request for approval of a conditional use pursuant to Section four oh two point C point four of the zoning ordinance to permit the proposed storage magazine facility on the Herzler's property. This is an aerial exhibit. We will be submitting a copy of this exhibit and testifying to it over the course of the hearing. But this is a much larger version so that I can refer to it as well as the witnesses and everyone can see what we're, what we're talking about. But the proposed facility would be located on the southern portion of the two hundred and thirteen acre property. So to orient everyone, this is Hopewell Road, sort of running across left to right, near the top of that exhibit. First and foremost, this is an aerial photograph of the property and the surrounding area with some additional information provided to identify property lines, where Hopewell Road is, the municipal boundary, and then some other features such as streams on the property. There is an existing access drive that leads from Hopewell towards the southern part of the property. And the proposed facility would utilize that existing access. And then a short extension of that access is proposed towards the rear of the property, along with a cul-de-sac that will provide a turnaround. along with a cul-de-sac that will provide a turnaround area for trucks that would be dropping off and picking up at the facility. The facility is located in an area of the property that at present is wooded, so all of the improvements associated with the facility would be located on portions of the property that are not part of the existing agricultural operation at the property, which is one of the ordinance requirements. The facility itself is surrounded by earth and burns. Those burns are approximately ten feet in height, and then there's a steel gate which prevents any unauthorized access to the interior of the facility. Within that burned area, there are four areas that are separate areas for housing the individual magazine storage units. Each of those areas is approximately thirty foot by fifty foot space, and then within each of those areas is the location for a magazine unit, and that magazine unit is where the explosives and related materials would be stored. And I'm giving you an overview of everything. We'll have witnesses that'll go into more detail on, on each of these items, but just want to have you or provide you with an overview of what's proposed as we get started. Each of those magazine units is approximately twenty feet by eight feet, and those units are approximately eight feet in height. The specific standards for a storage magazine facility are set forth in section seven thirty-two of the zoning ordinance. And in our opinion, this proposed facility complies with all of those specific requirements, as well as all of the other applicable requirements in the zoning ordinance that would apply to this type of use. And as was mentioned, we did provide a forty-five page narrative with the application that reviews all of those ordinance requirements and discusses how the proposed facility complies with those ordinance requirements. In addition to the request for conditional use approval, the application requests two other approvals as part of the application. First is a request for a modification pursuant to section eight thirteen point A point seven of the zoning ordinance, so as to not require a landscaping plan. And that's because of the large setback distances from the road and adjoining properties to that facility. The fact that it's going to be located in a wooded area of the property. There's a lot of existing vegetation, not only surrounding the facility, but along a lot of the property lines. And all of those features, together with the proposed earth and burns, are more than sufficient to meet the minimum buffering and screening requirements of section eight thirteen of the zoning ordinance. And section eight thirteen point eight point seven states as part of the application phase for either a land development plan, a subdivision plan, or a conditional use, the applicant can request, and the township has the right to modify the landscaping and screening requirements in section eight thirteen. So that's what that request is for. We just don't feel that planting any additional landscaping or buffering around the facility is, is necessary. Part of the discussion at the planning commission meeting related to the land development plan phase, so if the zoning application is approved, the next step would be land development, which that plan would be reviewed by the planning commission and ultimately come back here to the Board of Supervisors. We understand there is a tree replacement ordinance that the township has, so this request would not take us out of that tree replacement ordinance requirement, and we would certainly work with the township if there thought was some additional landscaping or screening may be of benefit. So I don't want to say that if you approve that, it takes everything away. We understand there are still issues we have to work through, and we're more than willing to do that. We thought it probably was just good to address that upfront in the conditional use application, given the unique location and existing improvements and proposed improvements that will more than adequately buffer and screen the facility. And then the last request in the application is a request for an extension of the timeframe in section twelve oh eight point J to secure the permit that would be authorized by the conditional use approval. So the zoning ordinance says you have to secure the permit within twelve months of conditional use approval, but that time period can be extended upon written request by an applicant. So in our application, we requested that that time period be extended from twelve months to thirty-six months. It is our sincere hope that we would not need anywhere near that thirty-six months, but we know we have to go through a land development plan review and approval. We know we need to go through the permitting processes with the E.P. and ATF, and we just don't want to have to be in a position where we're coming back and having to have another hearing just on a request to extend that time period. So we thought if we pushed that out past twelve months, it would save everybody the aggravation of having to do that. Again, our hope is that we're able to move much faster than that, but that is the, the last request in the application. And then the last thing I want to mention is that, as was noted, the planning commission did review this application, and we discussed it with them at their meeting earlier this month, I think it was March third, and they did recommend to the Board of Supervisors that the application and the request for it be approved. So I've said a lot. If there are any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. If not, we can proceed with testimony from the witnesses.
Can we mark each property, please?
Yeah, we certainly can. And what I'm going to do, I'm going to walk over and hand these to you, and then you can pass them down, and I'll take that marker in front of you. And I guess what we can do, maybe we'll go in, in reverse order. So Kerwick, this is your property here, correct?
Yes.
So we'll mark Kerwick with a, a three. I think there were a third. And then Mr. Stepien, you're right here. Mark you with a number two since you were second. And then Mr. Cobb, I guess there's a bit of a question mark. Since the property that's depicted along the western property line is the Klein property.
Understood.
And then you're somewhere farther.
I'm on the map.
To the west.
Actually, I'm higher than.
You can see, you can see the house.
You can see the house in the coal.
You saying there's a property line here?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, we'll put a.
That's the house, yeah.
We'll put a three, or a one there for you. Hopefully everyone can hear. If I sit here and the witness sits in the front row as well, if you can't, let us know. We can stand and turn and face people as, as necessary. My first witness, Mr. Rubeacher, if you could go ahead and introduce yourself to everyone, please. Just remember to speak up. Everyone, including the court reporter, can, can hear you.
Good evening. I'm Keith Rubeacher. I serve as managing member of M3XLO. We go by two names, M3XLO LLC is the registered name. We also use the trade name Trinity Drilling and Blasting as a, the brand that we fly as a drilling and blasting contractor. So that's the explanation between the two terms that you'll, that you'll hear. Same organization, two different brands under that organization.
And what is your position, both with Rubeacher Excavating, but more importantly with the applicant, M3XLO?
Sure. So with M3XLO, I serve as the managing member of the LLC. I also serve as president of Rubeacher Excavating, as Jamie indicated. That's the long-term business that our family has stewarded throughout southeastern Pennsylvania. Been in business for over fifty years, and a number of years ago, we split off our drilling and blasting department into a separate company, forming M3XLO, which also operates as Trinity Drilling and Blasting. So that's the lineage there and the connection as referred to.
And if you could just tell us a little bit about the history of M3XLO and also describe for us other storage facility locations that you have been involved with operating over the years.
Sure. So M3XLO, as I mentioned, purchases explosives, is it, you know, explosives organization that purchases and uses explosives through its operation as a drilling and blasting contractor. We work in quarries. We also work in building new construction sites for infrastructure, whether it's a roadway, a highway, or, or work in residential subdivisions, commercial properties, et cetera, things that where rock is standing in the way of a, of a project, or in quarries where resources are being developed so that roads can be built, concrete can be manufactured, et cetera. So those are the two parts of the, of the business. Through Rubeacher Excavating, we have operated storage facilities back into the nineteen eighties, multiple sites successfully. Trinity Drilling and Blasting has been operating its current site in all of its existence for the last five and a half years. It's been under operation through Trinity Drilling and Blasting. We have a site currently in Brecknock Township, Lancaster County. That has been in operation in total under both organizations since two thousand and eight.
And does the applicant possess both federal and state licenses that would be issued by the Federal Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms, or Alcohol, Tobacco, Firearms, and Explosives, and the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection for the operations at the other locations that you mentioned?
Yes, that is correct.
And are you familiar with the property located at nineteen thirty-three Hopewell Road? That's the subject of this application?
Yes, I am.
I'm going to show you what's been marked as applicant's exhibit A1. Are you familiar with that aerial exhibit that was prepared by C2C Design Group for this hearing?
Yes, I am.
And we have a larger version on the board next to me. What I'd like for you to do is just describe for us the general location of the property and the areas surrounding the property as depicted on that exhibit.
Sure. So as, as Jamie mentioned, just adding a little detail there, this is the township line, so we're all the way in the southern corner of Robeson Township. Route twenty-three would be east to west here, east being this direction. Hopewell Road here would take you on back further to French Creek State Park. And so this is a very large tract of land that does not have proximity to other inhabited dwellings, et cetera, which is of course important for this use. So that's why it's proposed far away from any other, any other buildings. You'll see all of this gray area here is wooded, is part of a preserved area through various land trusts, et cetera, and then the rest is surrounded by farmland. You'll see here at the upper part of the depiction are the existing agricultural and residential dwellings that the Herzlers occupy. And then there's a, a bit of a springs and stream run through here, and the, the existing field lane is what take, would take you back to where we're proposing this, this site.
And you mentioned the property is owned by the Herzlers?
Yes, so the Herzlers, along with their, their spouses, and then they lease that to Summit Level Dairy.
And did M3XLO enter into a lease back in two thousand twenty-two for the proposed facility that is the subject of tonight's application?
Yes, we have.
And has the applicant received authorization from the property owners and Summit Level Dairy to file this application?
Yes.
I'm showing you what's been marked as applicant's exhibit A2. Is that the authorization letter that permits M3XLO to file the application that's pending before the board tonight?
Yes, it is.
Is the property subject to an agricultural conservation easement that was purchased back in January of two thousand and two?
Yes, that's my understanding.
And has the Berks County Agricultural Land Preservation Board reviewed and authorized the facility that is proposed as part of this application as a rural enterprise on the property?
Yes, they have done so.
Those are all the questions I have for Mr. Rubeacher.
Okay, does anyone, well, first, does anyone, who is a party, have any questions? First, Mr. Cobb?
I'm not quite sure what your next two witnesses are going to discuss for explosive quantity, and how, will that be a first?
Mr. DePaul will be the witness.
Okay, then I will hold.
Mr. Stepien?
Yeah, I mean, a steel gate and a pile of dirt. That's the, that's what the other guys, the first guy said is going to be the deterrent for anyone getting into this, or for an explosion that's, that's going to save everyone, right?
There's, there's significant more detail that I believe Mr. DePaul will also share. I'll defer to him when he goes into more detail about the remaining protections that are required.
Mr. and Mrs. Karwick?
Can you speak at all, or would someone else speak to the amount of traffic and the need for a second facility? Because I understand you have one facility like this in Lancaster County now?
Yes.
Business growth, is this for geography, capacity? Would someone speak just to the need? And ultimately what I'm getting at is the amount of traffic that this would be, but it's maybe a separate question.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to the amount of traffic. I think that's part of some future testimony here, but I can speak to the, the other aspects of that. The other, the other area that we, that we use, a couple of different factors. The other magazine site that we have is not quite as convenient for where a bulk of our work is, is heading, but broader than that, we see business growth and opportunities. And without the opportunity to store explosives, the business really doesn't, doesn't work. And so our initial site, where we're currently operating at, does have some threats to it that could exist in the future where, depending on where a building permit was pulled, it would restrict our use of that site. And so this is an opportunity to allow for business growth, as well as to be sure that we can continue operating the business, providing aggregate for roads, highways, bridges, et cetera, and providing needs for our community. So it's a couple of different factors that are compiling that, that lead us to, to this, this exploration.
Any plans or anticipation for closing the Lancaster facility, as far as you can see it, or anything firmly in place to shut that down within any period of time you could expect?
No.
What, what is the length of your lease? Only those who are parties?
Security on site.
Mr. DePaul will be that.
Not on any address. Important questions, not deferred.
Understand.
We'll let those most familiar addresses.
Does anyone else who's a party have any questions? I said, what is the length of your lease?
Jamie, is that something that you would?
You can discuss the length, but not the fiscal.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's mine.
Yeah, there's an, an initial term of fifteen years with options for renewal. Obviously, it's a significant commitment, and so we would like the opportunity to do that for an extended period of time.
Is it your intention to add on to this property? It doesn't look from the picture that it's the size it's allowed by the township, thirty-five feet, and I think up to twenty percent of the acreage, which is huge. Is there a plan to add on?
No.
Okay.
No, and in fact, there are other, there are other constraints throughout the approval process that we've been on this multi-year journey that would constrict this from being increased. The other aspect of that, what you'll hear is some further testimony about distances to inhabited dwellings. And so if we tried to say, well, let's double the size of it, well, then you'd double the distance to inhabited dwellings, and so that, that's a constraint. This, what is proposed here does not violate any of the requirements for distance. So growth, growth of this site would be not something we would anticipate needing nor being permitted to do.
Mr. Stepien?
Yeah, you're saying your, the permit you're getting only requires so much. Now, earlier you were saying the zoning was changed and amended. Was that changed and amended for this? So then after you're in there, do we change it and amend it again to make it bigger, higher?
That's probably a question for Mr. Strong in terms of.
I mean, I can, I can answer that last, last year, the applicant and the Board of Supervisors worked together because this was a use that wasn't provided for in the zoning ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to allow this use. And this, and part of that was performance standards for, for this use. So that was the amendment to which I was referring in E-Pole of two thousand twenty-four. So that was the amendment to which I was referring in the E poll of 2024.
All right, so you did amend the zoning for this?
The zoning ordinance was amended to provide for this use. And again, the applicant worked in conjunction with the Board of Supervisors to.
With you guys, right? You're the Board of Supervisors up here?
The Board of Supervisors, yes.
Okay, so they came to you and you approved that amended the zoning so they could do this?
Well, it's not so they could do that so the use would be, so that it's a use that would be provided for after consultation with professionals who understood the safety standards and health safety and lawful standards set them into consideration.
I mean, safety standards is going to go across the street.
And at this, and what the applicant needs to do is show that they meet the performance standards set forth in the ordinance. Okay, and does that, does anyone else who is a party have any questions? All right, now does the board have any questions? All right, Mrs. Brightenstein?
I think it's more common to, okay, I understand your concerns. We did not take this lightly by any means, okay? But at some point, you have to start to give a little bit, to get a little bit of business back into the community. I live by the quarry. My house shakes. He provides dynamite to diers. He provides it to the one in Burrow's borough. I understand your concern and your fears. I'd say we're, I'm at risk of too, but they've been respectful, considerate, followed the rules. And if you don't do something like this, you're going to have things that are rogue. And do you want more problems, or do you want to be protected? Ask for your opinion. Say, hey, look, we understand your concerns. What can we do to make sure that everybody feels safe? They don't want you to not feel safe. They want to be welcome, but they also want to respect your homes. My house shakes from the quarry. Nothing I can do about it. They're coming to you in advance, so I respect that.
Let me just explain something to you about, about zoning and Pennsylvania law on zoning. And that is that every lawful use has to be provided for at, at an appropriate location in the township. This isn't something, for example, that you can put in the middle of a densely populated borough. This is something that requires buffering and area around it. And so it had to be, it had to be cited in the township. And what, because if you don't, what happens is that you have exclusionary zoning. And when you have exclusionary zoning and a court finds that you exclude a lawful use as a municipality, that use is entitled to cite specific relief, meaning it can be put generally where the applicant wants it. So it's far better to set standards for where the use would be located, where it can be located and cited safely, and have standards that are specific to the industry for purposes of community safety. Okay, does anyone else on, on the board, well, let's just have the board questions first, so you can follow up. Does, no one else on the board has any questions? All right, if you have a follow-up question?
Just follow the question. You mentioned how long the Lancaster facility's been there.
Could you just repeat that?
Yep.
Right, we want to have everything that needs to be directed to the person and the questions being asked. We did not have a din in the room.
You'd mentioned how long the Lancaster facility's been in place. I don't want to misquote it, but it's been a while. What's the most significant safety issue that's ever come up there? Has there been an explosion, the problem of that magnitude of fire?
Yeah, the facility I was referring to, since we've had an operation Brecknock Township, Lancaster County since 2008, we have not had any issues there outside of sometimes the farmer says, hey, there's some kids out back there. And we're like, yep, we see him on camera, you know, we'll either call the police or he'll go out and see if they need something. I prefer not to describe what he finds going on sometimes, but sometimes they're looking for a secluded spot. So outside of that, there's really been no explosives-related incidents.
Thank you.
I assume this will be, I'm sorry, I assume this will be addressed when you talk about security, but is there concern about sand lands backing up to it with?
I have, I have none with the, with the earthen berms. And then what you'll hear about the testimony of how the magazines are actually constructed. I have no concerns about that.
Okay, don't have any follow-up questions? All right?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Keith. Mr. DePaul, if you could go ahead and introduce yourself to everyone, please.
My name is Adam DePaul. I'm with M3 X-Blow.
And what is your position with M3 X-Blow?
I am the manager of M3 X-Blow.
And could you generally describe what you do in that position?
Yeah, so general manager, activities, projects estimating, project management.
And are you familiar with the aerial exhibit that's been identified tonight as applicants exhibit A1?
Yes.
And I'm going to show you what's been marked as applicants exhibit A3. Are you familiar with the zoning plan that was submitted with the application and is marked here tonight as applicants exhibit A3?
Oh, yes.
There's been discussion already about the property itself and where the facility will be located on the property. But maybe if we could have you refer to the aerial exhibit and then the zoning plan as necessary. We also have on a larger board. But if you could describe for us the, the actual physical improvements that are proposed for this facility and that would be constructed on the property?
Yeah, so several people already kind of talked about the property a little bit. But again, we're in the southern portion of the property, the wooded area. We intend on storing explosives and related materials there. The intended, we intend to store up to 160,000 pounds on site as permitted by the regulations set forth by ATF and DEP.
And the, the compound itself, if you could describe that for us as depicted on the plan?
Oh, yeah, so it's earthen berms. The compound's eight, about acre and a half. There's a heavy steel gate at the only entrance to the property, gravel surface, new pavement. Four separate areas as kind of described before with the magazine structures that will be built. Each magazine unit, they're all called type two units. They're metal boxes about 20 by eight, 20 feet long, eight feet wide, eight feet tall. And each area will have its own loading area in front of, of the, the units.
In, in terms of access, is that proposed via the existing driveway for the majority? And then a short extension of that driveway back to the facility with a cul-de-sac for trucks to turn around?
Oh, yes, that's correct.
And the location of the facility on the property, is it designed to be located in the wooded area so as to avoid any areas that are actively farmed or used in agricultural production on the property?
Oh, correct.
We had some questions about security measures. If you could talk to us about what is proposed for overall security and how those different features together combine to make the secure, make the facility secure?
Yeah, so during the approval process with ATF, everything is strictly governed by ATF and DEP. What you're actually allowed to be able to do within the storage facility. The earthen berms, the steel gate, each unit, the type two outdoor units that we are proposing for this facility, they are bullet resistant, fire resistant, duck resistant, ventilated. The exterior of the, the units, or it's, it's like a, it's kind of like a Conex box, and there'll be a quarter inch thick steel and hardwood in, in between. Everything is approved and stamped by ATF after construction.
And the, the earthen berms that would surround the facility, are those approximately 10 feet in height?
Yes.
And the, the magazine unit, I think you said that that's similar to like a, like a Conex?
Yep.
Container? The design of that magazine unit is dictated by ATF and DEP regulations?
Correct.
That includes the, the type of lock, the type of hinge? All of those design details are mandated by, by those regulations?
Correct, yeah. The steel gate is locked, each unit is double locked. There's multiple ways of securing each facility.
So in addition to all of those design features for the, the facility, let's talk about the, the monitoring. Mr. Brubacher mentioned folks showing up on cameras. But discuss for us the, the types of monitoring that would be located at this facility to prevent any unauthorized entry into the facility?
Yeah, so there's security alarms and 24-hour surveillance cameras powered by solar. So the gate is alarmed, each unit itself is alarmed, plus the gate has a camera and every single unit opening has a camera. So each, each access point is, has a security camera and a security alarm.
And in terms of monitoring, all of those systems are monitored 24/7?
Yes, 24/7, and any interruptions in it, we get phone calls, texts, emails, whenever anything goes in front of any single camera.
And those would go to, to you as the, the owner and operator of the facility?
Myself and a couple of other people, yes.
And depending on the scope of the security issued, do those notifications, are notifications then made to DEP and/or ATF as necessary?
Correct.
And there is also an ordinance requirement that was part of the ordinance adopted by Robson Township that requires if there is an incident of unlawful or unauthorized entry, that when you receive notice, the township police receive notice, would this system be set up to provide that notice to the township as required?
Yes.
In terms of where the facility is located on the property, Mr. Brubacher talked about required setbacks for these types of facilities. And do those setbacks look at distances to roadways as well as distances to occupied structures?
Correct, yes.
And does the location of the proposed facility meet or exceed those setback requirements at this location to both roadways and occupied structures?
Oh, yes, it does.
We talked about screening, or at least I did in my, in my opening comments. In your opinion, given the 10-foot-high berms that you mentioned, as well as the location of the facility within the wooded area of the property, do those features, together with the large setback distances from the property lines, help to limit visibility of the facility from any adjacent properties or from the street?
Yes, with, yeah, yep.
And to the extent feasible, as you go through the land development plan approval process and designing construction, will existing trees and mature vegetation be preserved to the maximum extent possible to provide screening for the proposed facility?
That's correct.
And I mentioned in my opening comments that there was discussion at the planning commission meeting about the township's tree replacement ordinance and if they would require any additional landscaping. And I mentioned that the applicant is more than willing to work with the township as it goes through the land development plan process. Was that statement on my part true and correct from the applicant's perspective?
Yes, that's correct.
Let's talk about the operations of the facility. Will this be an unoccupied and unmanned facility?
Correct.
And how often will folks from M3 X-Blow be visiting the site on a daily and weekly basis?
So it'll be on average twice a day, five days a week, occasionally six, but more than likely five days a week.
Counsel, if I may?
Sure.
When you talk about visitation, are you talking to pick up, say, product or an inspection, a safety inspection or a security inspection? What type of visits were that?
Go ahead, Adam.
It would be, the, the visitors we're referring to right now would be for picking up and dropping off products.
So there's no design-specific security checking it out?
Oh, like visiting it daily or something like that?
Uh, we, I mean, when the guys are there daily, they're doing safety inspections.
So that's part of that?
That's part of that, that's part of that as well. ATF, DEP, they can make an inspection whenever they feel necessary.
Thank you. Sorry for interrupting there.
Don't. And, and so those, let's say, two trips per day, are those M3 X-Blow employees that will be accessing the facility?
That's correct.
And is that to pick up product in the morning and then deliver unused product back to the facility in the evening?
Correct, yes.
What type of vehicles will the applicant's employees typically use to, to access the facility on a daily basis?
We typically use a fleet of like, light-duty pickup trucks and then like F50 box trucks.
And then what about any other types of vehicles? Is, is product delivered directly to the facility by a manufacturer or distributor?
Yes, and typically the deliveries range from box trucks up to tractor trailers.
And how often would those types of deliveries be expected on a, a normal operating basis?
We could expect as frequent as once a week, but typically once a month.
In terms of access to the facility, is it designed or is it intended that anyone other than the applicant's employees or deliveries being made to the facility would have access to the site? In other words, you don't have customers that are showing up to inspect product or buy products at the site or anything like that? Is that correct?
That's correct.
So just M3 employees and then deliveries by your supplier?
Correct, and the deliveries by the suppliers are always accompanied, accompanied by M3 employees.
In your opinion then, will the facility generate traffic at a level that's generally consistent with the current use of the property in terms of vehicles entering and leaving the property?
I believe so.
And then other than during loading or unloading times, does the applicant anticipate any vehicles or trucks being parked at the facility during the day or overnight hours?
Uh, no, not outside of deliveries, no.
And given that you're really just there for loading and unloading, in your opinion, is there any need for parking spaces at the facility that would be in addition to the four loading and unloading spaces?
No.
All right, you have so many ordinance requirements. We have a lot of ground to cover. I, I do apologize, but we do need to cover everything. The ordinance requires that operators of storage magazine facilities such as the one that is proposed must provide proof of licensing or permitting by all agencies having jurisdiction, including DEP and the ATF prior to use and occupancy of the facility. Does the applicant currently have the licenses from DEP and ATF for this facility?
Uh, no, not for this facility.
What is the typical process for obtaining those approvals from DEP and the ATF for a facility such as the one that is proposed?
So we would go first with ATF. We would show them the setbacks, our proposed plan. They would review the plan, make a site visit, and check all the, the magazine structures and make sure they're built correctly and issue permits for each structure.
So if the application is approved, the applicant will then proceed with the, the licensing by ATF and DEP?
Correct.
And does the applicant agree to then provide to the township copies of all applicable DEP and ATF licenses and permits as they become available?
Oh, yes.
And that would all be done before the facility is opened and a certificate of occupancy or use would be issued?
Yes.
And on an ongoing basis, does the applicant agree to comply with the applicable permitting and licensing requirements and the zoning ordinance for the facility?
Yes.
Section 732. D of the zoning. Section seven thirty-two point D of the zoning ordinance states that storage magazine facilities must be used solely for the storage of explosives and related materials. Is this facility proposed to be operated solely for storage of explosives and related materials?
Yes.
No other use of the facility such as for manufacturing or any other type of use is proposed, correct?
Correct.
Um are all of the proposed structures, including the berms, the magazines, um the interior uh walls, are are all of those designed and will be constructed in accordance with all applicable federal and state requirements for this type of use?
Yes.
And you'll maintain the facility in compliance with all of those uh permits, licenses, ordinance requirements, et cetera, for the life of the facility?
Yes.
The uh ordinance requires that the applicant uh provide the township with a certificate of insurance. Um if the application is approved, does the applicant agree to comply with the insurance requirements of section seven thirty-two point I of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
And will the certificate of insurance be provided to the township with the uh permit application?
Uh yeah.
If the application is approved, does the applicant agree to provide for the cost of any training for police, fire and emergency personnel concerning the uh protection and safety of the township and its residents as required by the zoning ordinance?
Yep, yes, we discussed that at the previous meeting.
And the ordinance also requires uh that the uh permit, if issued by the township, is to be uh renewed annually. Um if the application is approved and that permit is issued, does the applicant agree to comply with the permanent renewal process in the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
We touched on the requirement in section seven thirty-two point L point nine that if there is any unauthorized entry, then notification be provided to the township police department. At the same time, the notification is provided to the applicant and you testified that that notice would be provided at the same time, correct?
Yes.
Is the uh facility proposed to be operated in compliance with all applicable provisions of section uh seven thirty-two? Is there any ordinance in your opinion?
Uh yes.
Are any uh signs proposed uh for the facility?
No.
If the applicant ever does propose to install a sign, will they comply with the applicable sign regulations in the zoning ordinance uh for uh subselling?
Yes.
Section uh seven oh two point B of the zoning ordinance sets forth performance standards and controls for all non-residential uses in the township. And we went through those requirements at night and the narrative, but um is the facility uh proposed to be operated in compliance with all applicable performance standards uh in for this type of facility in the agricultural preservation district?
Yes.
Is the facility proposed to be operated so as not to be continually noxious, injurious, or offensive by reason of dust, smoke, odor, fumes, noise, vibration, gas, effluent discharge or elimination?
Yes.
If the uh application is approved, does the applicant agree to maintain uh the off-street loading spaces in compliance with the applicable provisions of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Does the applicant agree to maintain the uh proposed gravel extension of the existing driveway back to the facility?
Yes.
Uh and uh no gravel will wash or to be or be deposited upon hopeful road as a result of the applicant's operations, is that correct?
That's correct.
Is the facility proposed um to be operated in compliance with all applicable criteria for conditional use applications as set forth in section twelve oh eight F of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Have you reviewed the forty-five page narrative that was submitted with the application?
Yes, I have.
I'm sorry. To the to the extent applicable, do you adopt that narrative when the statement is contained in it as part of your testimony?
Yes.
And so my last question to you, in 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 your experience and in your opinion, does the proposed facility and and the application comply with all applicable requirements for this type of use in the uh agricultural preservation district in Robson Township?
Yes.
Uh those are all the questions I have for Mr. DePaul.
Do any of the uh individuals who entered the chair in this have any questions? Um Mr. Cobb first?
We've glanced over illumination, what kind of light pollution can we anticipate in the surrounding area?
Any lights?
Correct, as in uh cultural lighting ruining the night sky?
Yep.
How bright is this going to be, is it going to dominate the landscape?
We are not proposing any lighting type lighting.
Okay, I thought we said illumination. You did, counselor.
Go back and see where I said illumination. Do you remember what that was in reference to?
It was, do you leave it here to the illumination requirements set forth by?
Oh, yeah, well, the facility be operated in compliance with all of those uh ordinance requirements and yes, since no.
My question stands, twelve o'clock at night, what kind of lights are we gonna be looking at?
If we were to ever need to access the facility at night, we would utilize vehicle vehicle lights and headlights and that.
So normally, nothing.
Normally, no, okay.
Sir, there is a white ordinance that we have here that would uh my recollection would include um as fairly aggressive would preclude light from shining and disrupting neighbors. Plus with the screenings that, I think I saw your house, with the screenings that I think would happen, I think even if they worked with any kind of lights, I don't think that'd be a problem.
Understood, then my final question, sir, is the height of the Conex boxes that you described, I know you mentioned it once, could you repeat that, please?
Uh about a feet.
Okay, so below the berm.
Correct, understood.
The object of this is to not bring any more attention to it than you need to.
That's correct.
Okay, so lighting will be minimal, disruptions to the community will be minimal. Our biggest thing, I think, is safety initially. So, yeah. The less, the better. Mr. Cobb, do you have any further questions?
No, ma'am.
Uh Mr. Steppen.
Okay, I'll just hold on, wait for you, back to the security, fence and dirt wall, right? Or a gate, not a fence. You mentioned the gate.
Correct, there's there's a heavy steel gate that would be at the entrance and then open berms.
And that's the wall?
That is the wall, correct.
No kids can climb over that?
I'm not saying, I didn't say that.
I was a kid, man, I can climb over anything, it's heavy.
But based on our twenty-four hour surveillance, if anything were to enter that site, we would know about.
Okay, so you have somebody looking at the cameras or the next day you look, if there's something happens, you look at the camera and say, oh, that's how.
The individuals that get the the pictures and notifications are instant to our phones or emails, it's instant.
Okay, to we, who's we, you have a security? That's just uh notification?
It's additional people that that work under under M three X blow.
Can I ask a question?
My wife.
Why don't you, why don't you ask the question, Porch, if you, I want to know. How much explosives will be in these um trucks going to and from? And what is the safety of those things driving past our homes that are not back in the wood? How's that?
So deliveries will vary based on what is needed at the time and what's coming on site. The the largest would be the tractor trailer load, um but that, the largest deliveries do not have to happen as frequent because they're, you try to minimize the 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 amount of traffic as possible. Uh the daily use are the biggest trucks that we use to to access the facility are F five fifty box or F six fifty box trucks uh twenty-six thousand pounds.
Of explosives in it?
Yeah, I mean, that's the average for the truck, but um less than that for the explosives that are in it.
So what does that look like when it does explode?
Um so when you're transporting, you that there's there's many different uh regulations for transport. Your detonators are sort of separate from the blast agent. For that to happen would that would not, I don't understand that question.
Okay, I guess the the question is, will you be transporting, will you ensure that materials are transported um in compliance with the ATF regulations?
A- absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Unless you have more, you were talking insurance. Sure, that's your insurance for your liability, but what insurance do we have?
Right.
I lose my neighbors, my neighbors lose many, would that, you know, hard tortures lose all their cows.
And what about insurance for homeowner's insurance? Is this, this thing is only, only parties are are permitted to ask questions, but I mean, the question is.
I know the same thing, what kind of insurance do we have for our houses, for our life, life insurance, I didn't care.
I I guess the que- the question is, under the insurance that you that you carry, you provide a certificate of insurance for the township, what kind of uh insurance protects third parties in the event uh of an incident?
For the third party's family, for the third party, don't be a.
Now respond to the uh that question, no. So the company carries uh a liability insurance along with an umbrella insurance and those insurance amounts require uh comply with the township requirements as well as with the requirements of all of the regulatory authorities, including DOT for regulating the transportation of explosives. So there's insurance coverage all around, um and if there were some catastrophe and that insurance policy were exhausted, uh then I'm sure the attorneys would figure out how to get to the assets of the organization until there was nothing left.
Okay, now that um the C box, you want to keep it in, the trailer and the dirt wall, is that the cheapest way possible to secure this?
That is not the cheapest way, that is the one of the improved ways from ATF, who will be, who regulates this, who will be approving everything.
Is it the cheapest legal way?
I, it's.
Are there better ways?
It's the way that they they have approved.
They, who's they?
ATF and DEP, the the individuals that regulate it.
Okay, now you're a worker, see how you said your workers are the only ones getting in there? What security clearance do they carry?
So every employee that works for us, um to to be able to handle or be around explosives, you have to uh pass the employee possessor like background check through ATF, that is a requirement for employment.
Okay, and that they do background checks and everything on that?
Correct.
See, where am I guessing down? Right now, you're like same thing with your cameras, uh there's no lights, so I take it they're all night vision cameras, they can see at night?
Correct.
And and you got somebody up all night to monitor that, right? Of course not.
You need, you need to answer the question.
What was the key, the key question?
You have somebody up at night to monitor the your phone app all all night long if something happened?
The notifications are on, yes.
You don't have anybody set to like to stay awake and watch out.
We all have our devices, the people that are aren't on that list have their devices and the notifications are reported to be on.
I I just don't feel good, like I said, I can climb over that wall, so can you.
Do you, do you have any other questions, Mr. Steppen?
Do, can I ask a question?
Oh, that's why you felt. All right, and then uh Mr. and Mrs. Kerwick, do you have any questions?
Could you describe the building just a little bit more? I understand there are uh four magazines, eight by eight by twenty foot, are they within any larger building that's divided into sections?
No, so each each section is three um boxes, uh eight by eight or eight by twenty by eight. Um they're metal containers, uh inside each container will have about a quarter thick inch steel and then uh there's a hardwood requirement as well. And again, all the containers get inspected by ATF, uh they actually receive a stamp by them and then every every year they get inspected and we get audited and everything gets, everything goes through them. Okay. There's not, they're not inside of another structure.
Understood, yep.
Are you the manager of the, I'm sorry, Lykister County Facility, I forget what town.
Uh, yes, yes.
Thank you, Breck. How often are DEP and ATF onsite there?
They can come whenever they want, but it's at least once a year.
So is that once a year typical, three times a year, basically once a year is what we can count on?
Yes.
Are Canardan Police planning to monitor the area?
I can't answer that for Canardan Police, we're Robson Township.
Sorry, Robson Police, well, Canardan's by the other side, I don't know.
I mean, yeah, we would patrol as much as we possibly could.
Is that, do we have a timeframe, like weekly?
I mean, it could be put in there that it is a business check that can be done every night as long as the the officers can get to it, if that's something the board wishes to go with. So we do do business checks every night and property checks every night on midnight shift. I don't recall how many we did this past year, but I think it was in the thousands.
It's good.
Yeah, it's something that we can always do.
You had mentioned that you have twenty-four hour surveillance, is that human or AI?
It is human.
Awesome. I assume you live in Bowmansville?
I do not.
I didn't hear that.
I said, I assume you live in Bowmansville. So how far away do the people who get the notifications live from this facility?
Um I do not know the specific distances right now, but that is something we will know. And uh I can tell you that I do not live in Bowmansville, I live in Roersford, Pennsylvania, so it's about a half an hour west.
That's nice, you split the difference.
Correct.
So I guess my question is, if someone hops the fence and the closest person is in Roersford or the notified person is in Bowmansville, do you immediately tell the police, do the police also get the feed?
If, yeah, I've heard the ordinance requirement.
Please get the notice at the same time.
And to be clear, like if someone does jump the fence, there is multiple other light, there's multiple locks, there's multiple.
It's not like they're just gonna take a pocket knife and carter away and, yeah.
It's not gonna happen.
Okay, but you guys get notified, I apologize if I missed that.
Yes.
What do you think the furthest, how long do you think it would take for you to arrive at the hall? You guys are up.
I would say eight minutes.
You work with Canardan, could you request them in emergency?
Yeah, you can request Canardan go there.
Canardan doesn't come by the end. Well, nobody does. In emergency, I think they would go. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Request them, I mean, and that eight minutes is when we're sitting here on this side of the township, trying to get to the other side of the township. We're a very large. Yeah, it could be a minute if we're out there.
Yeah.
Doing our checks anyway.
Um do you have any further questions? Does anyone else as a party have any further questions? And board members, do board members have any questions?
So I have a question and a statement, uh it's your Breck Knock Lykster facility, which two thousand one, have you had any attempted break-ins, trespassing, theft?
Not during my time here.
Can you speak?
Like I said, I I don't recall, there certainly were, there were no thefts, there were no break-ins, uh.
You spoke of kids being there, I'm not worried about that.
There was, you know, people driving back the lane, trying to see where it went, stealing fruit from the farmer, but there was nothing that is uh that we have, we have not had an issue there where we have never had a situation we could have pressed charges.
Okay, and then my statement is to, I understand everybody's concerns, I'm not I'm not taking away from them, I just wanted, I think I said this at a previous meeting, just wanna remind everybody that on your daily travels and probably driving here, you have the potential of passing a tanker full of gasoline, eight to nine thousand gallons, that requires no detonator, it requires it to fall over. Um same with propane trucks. Um and the, not only these guys, but other blasting companies drive up and down these roads, especially with the quarries in our area. I've personally seen it myself, there was actually an accident in Robson Township involving one of their vehicles about two years ago. There was a decent amount of material on that vehicle. There was a decent amount of material on that vehicle. So, you know, this facility is secured by ATF, DEP, all the regulations, but driving to the Wawa, to the grocery store, from here to home, I truthfully believe you're passing much more volatile objects on the roadway. Just, just a thought.
Does anyone, does anyone else have any further questions for this witness? Doesn't appear to, doesn't appear to have any.
Okay, we have one more witness, are you good, you need a break, or?
You're like, always.
Okay, I always feel bad, I never know how they keep up and pay attention. So I'll call Larry Grabosky there, if you can introduce yourself to everyone, please.
Yes, my name is Larry Grabosky, G R Y B O S. My name is Larry Grabosky, G R Y B O S K Y, with C two C Design Group.
And what is your position with C two C Design Group?
Project Manager.
And can you generally describe what you do in that position?
I manage various land development projects, they have different sizes of scope. I obtain permits and approvals from the outside agencies. I perform site layout, design, erosion sediment control, so mart management, grading.
And are you licensed as a professional engineer in Campbell, Oklahoma, Pennsylvania?
Yes.
And if you could, just please briefly describe your educational background and experience as it relates to land planning and preparing site plans such as the zoning plan that was submitted with the application?
Yeah, I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Penn State. I have twenty-five years of professional experience conducting geotechnical investigations and design, site development, drainage plans, floor more management plans, erosion sediment control plans, obtaining necessary permits for the zoning variances and special exceptions.
And have you testified as an expert witness before other municipal boards, whether that's a zoning hearing board or board supervisors, but in other zoning proceedings previously?
Yes.
And has any municipality ever refused to accept you as an expert?
No.
I would offer Mr. Grabosky as an expert witness on site design and compliance with municipal land use ordinance requirements.
Does anyone who has entered an appearance as, as a party have any questions just as to Mr. Grabosky's professional qualification as, as an expert? If there's any, does anyone on the board have any questions? Anyone on the board, I, anyone on the board have any objections to his thing qualifies an expert? Or he's still qualified as an expert?
Okay, thank you. Did M three X blow retain C two C Design Group to prepare the zoning plan that was submitted with the application?
Yes.
So you're familiar then with the property in nineteen thirty-three Hopewell Road, that is the subject of this application?
Yes.
And did your firm prepare the aerial exhibit that has been identified as applicant's exhibit A one here tonight?
Yes.
We've had a lot of testimony regarding the existing conditions at the property, as well as the surrounding area. Is there anything to add, or have we fairly well covered everything? Okay. The area of the property, let's say, south of Hopewell Road, that's to be developed with the proposed facilities, that area approximately a hundred and sixty-four acres in size?
Yes.
And the facility that's proposed, we've also had testimony regarding where it's located on the property and, and what the improvements are that are proposed. Anything to add there in terms of access or loading spaces, or anything else that we haven't already touched on in the testimony tonight?
Nothing to add.
In terms of the specific criteria for that facility, does the zoning plan include all of the improvements and amenities for the facility required by Section seven thirty-two point B of the zoning ordinance, including the, the access, loading spaces, berms, inner walls, the gate, any of those types of improvements?
Yes.
If the application is approved, that, approved, I mentioned that we would be back with the land development plan, would that be the next step in the approval process for this type of facility?
Yes.
The property you testified is larger than one hundred contiguous acres, correct?
Yes.
Does, what is the property, or the lot width of the property at, along Hopewell Road?
It's approximately two thousand and fourteen feet, measured along the right of the line.
And so that would exceed the minimum lot width requirement of five hundred feet?
Yes.
And we had testimony tonight that the facility is designed to be located on a portion of the property that is currently wooded and is not farmed regularly as part of the existing agricultural operations on the property, is that correct?
Yes.
The improvements associated with the facility, specifically the magazine units, the loading spaces, the berm, are they all designed to be set back a minimum distance of at least one hundred feet from the nearest property line?
Yes.
What are the approximate distances that the magazine units are set back from the other property lines?
From north Hopewell Road, it's greater than twenty-six hundred feet. From the east is greater than one thousand one hundred feet, and from the west is greater than nine hundred and thirty.
The zoning ordinance limits the height of storage magazine facilities to not more than thirty-five feet. What is the overall height of the magazine units?
Eight feet.
And is the height of the proposed berm approximately ten feet?
Yes.
The zoning ordinance limits buildings and structure coverage to not more than ten percent of the lot. What is the proposed building and structure coverage of the property when you take it, when you include this proposed facility?
Less than one percent.
And the zoning ordinance limits impervious coverage to not more than twenty percent of the lot. What is the proposed impervious coverage of the property when you include this proposed facility?
It's less than one percent.
To the extent possible, are existing trees and mature vegetation proposed to be preserved so that the facility is not visible from the property lines or budding street right of way?
Yes.
In your opinion, is the facility designed in compliance with all applicable provisions of Section seven thirty-two of the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
In your opinion, is the application generally consistent with the purposes of the Agricultural Preservation District?
Yes.
Does the application, in your opinion, comply with all applicable utility and dimensional requirements for storage magazine facilities in the Agricultural Preservation District?
Yes.
Section seven oh two point B of the zoning ordinance sets forth performance standards and controls for non-residential uses. In your opinion, is the facility designed in compliance with all applicable performance standards and controls for this type of use in the Agricultural Preservation District?
Yes.
The property above Hopewell Road is a, a public street, correct?
Yes.
Is the facility designed in such a manner to provide safe and convenient access for both emergency vehicles and off-stri- off-street loading for the product for the facility?
Yes.
There was testimony that the security monitoring devices would be powered via solar energy. Are any solar vices proposed that would encroach into any required setbacks for the property?
No.
The off-street loading spaces, are there four off-street loading spaces proposed?
Yes.
Would the ordinance otherwise require only one?
Yes.
In your opinion, are those four off-street loading facilities sufficient for the operation of the proposed facility?
Yes.
Trying to skip down through some questions. Are the loading spaces designed to comply with all applicable requirements for off-street loading spaces in the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
In your opinion, are any parking spaces necessary for the proposed facilities since that are required by the zoning ordinance?
No.
The extension of the gravel driveway, will it be designed and constructed so as not to create any drainage or sedimentation problems on an adjacent property or street?
Yes.
And all of that will be reviewed as part of the land development plan process?
That's true.
I mentioned that we've requested a modification from the landscaping and screening requirement. In your opinion, is that modification justified given the existing wooded areas, the mature vegetation along the property lines, the distances from the facility to the property lines, and the berms that are proposed?
Yes.
The last request in the application was a request to extend the time period to secure building permit from twelve months to thirty-six months. Do you think that request is justified in terms of the need for securing land development plan approval and licenses and permits from outside agencies?
Yes.
Have you reviewed the narrative that was submitted with the application?
Yes.
And to the extent applicable, do you adopt the narrative and the statements contained in it as part of your testimony?
Yes.
Last question, in your expert opinion, do you feel the application complies with all applicable requirements in the township zoning ordinance for a magazine storage facility in the Agricultural Preservation District?
Yes.
Those are all the questions I have for Mr. Grabosky.
Mr. Cowley, do you have any?
Yes.
Mr. Steppin, any questions?
I, I'll probably just, eight foot, ten foot, trailer's eight foot, wall, ten foot. So that trailer's sitting in the mud, I guess, not up on anything. My concern is if it goes bang, you know? I grew up next to some big chemical plants that exploded, and that, it's not fun. And then when it happens, that's when everyone says, well, then they start asking questions.
Do you have any, any questions for this witness, then?
So, you know, if something explodes, it only goes sideways into that wall?
Who are you asking?
That'd be a better question for Keith or Adam.
Okay.
I'm addressed that, so the dirt, earthen berms are sloped about as steep as Dart Falls. And the idea is that if something were to go wrong, that those earthen berms would deflect the energy outward and upward rather than just directly out and parallel to the ground. These conex spots we're referring to are not on trailers, are not on wheels, they're gonna be set on the stone pad, they will not rust, rust and rot away into the mire. And they're eight foot tall, there's two foot of berm above that. And so if there were something to go wrong, the idea is that the earthen berms help to deflect outward and upward, so that the energy does not just tran- transfer matter.
Mr. Cowley?
And it will also be surrounded by woods, correct? There's, as you'll see there, there's woods on about, up quite three hundred and sixty degrees of that, but the, the majority of it, the area where the gate is and the turnaround for the delivery trucks, obviously there's no woods there.
Understood.
So it's not quite a three hundred and sixty degree surround. Thank you.
And Mr. Steppin, do you have any further questions?
No, just, I mean, if you ever get a chance to look like an arsenal at the, where they store powder, think, you can go to the Frankfurt Arsenal, and just go take a look. It's not in a trailer, you know, it's on dirt, it's, it'll, it'll cost more, but I'm sure it's still feasible for them, you know, to, that's why I asked, is it the cheapest method? And I, it is, you know, push some dirt, and trailers, I mean, it's.
You will have the ability to, to testify in a moment. Mr. and Mrs. Kerwick, do you have any questions for Mr. Grabosky?
Two quick questions, and, and I'm not sure who it's best for, you may have said. Do you know what the, the minimum distance to a residence is for a facility like this? And you don't have to dig for it, we can't find it, but if you have it handy, I'd appreciate it.
So, for this, for this proposed section, unit, the minimum distance to a nearest occupied structure is one thousand nine hundred and sixty-five feet.
Thank you. And you mentioned the height of the berm that's required, what's the maintenance like on a berm like that, the ten foot? If it settles over time, will those be maintained, brought back up to ten feet? So just a simple question, yeah, what's the maintenance on the berm?
Yes, we, we will maintain the berms, the current facility has, there's some slight vegetation growing to eliminate, like, runoff, and that's also maintained as well. Thank you, that's all for me.
Sorry, that's all for me.
Hey, Robert, one piece of clarification, just to make sure I understand correctly. We're talking trucks entering here to the west of the farm, correct?
Correct, using the existing driveway.
We're not using the existing driveway right across from Cold Run.
Correct.
Correct, we're using the existing farming.
This bridge can't take that traffic. Okay.
Okay, now if they decide they want to use the other road, there's nothing to stop them, right? They'll just come in and open the permit and.
Well, I would offer, we have to do what, we have to comply with the evidence that was presented at the, at the hearing tonight, which would include where our access is located. And, you know, we're coming all the way back here and then putting on that, that new section, that would also be part of the land development plan process as well as confirming that access.
So it absolutely cannot be changed.
I don't think anybody's going to say absolutely, but to, just to expand on, on what was just said a moment ago, when, anytime a, a zoning decision is written, one of the standard conditions attached to a special exception or variance or conditional use like this is that all activity is to be in compliance with the evidence and testimony presented at the hearing and in the application. So, so any, you know, any, anything that's testified to, that was testified to under oath and would be a condition of, of any approval, should this be approved?
And if, if they say, we're gonna go up this road anyway, so they pay a fine, right? Every time they do, is that all it comes down to?
I can't, I can't answer for what happens if they break the law. I mean, this, a zoning decision has the effect of law.
Okay.
The bridge in question, battery, in your road, is there a weight restriction on that bridge?
There, there is no bridge.
So at that point, it would be feasible to see, assume that it's eighty thousand pounds?
We, it was replaced with two forty-eight inch cold runs last year, prior to.
So with no, with no restricted size, there's no restriction on that bridge?
That road is not restricted on weight.
Just procedural questions, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar. You'd mentioned that they'll have a decision forty-five days from the final hearing. Is this the final hearing, or is there one after this?
This will likely be the final hearing, it will be the final hearing.
Just, no, guys, this wasn't your procedure, so, thank you.
And procedurally, what happens is that, what's going to happen after we're done with all of the evidence, testimony, closing statements, is that the board will recess into executive session. And most likely, we're going to have a decision approving or denying the use. Then we have forty-five days to, to give it a written decision, mail it to the applicants. Generally, I get decisions done in much less than forty-five days because, not because I'm a wonderful citizen, but because I want to be able to remember details and read my own handwriting. So, so yes, there would be a written decision within forty-five days. If any party disagrees with the decision, or any condition attached to the decision, there is a right of appeal within thirty days to the Court of Common Pains of Berks County.
Thank you, and it's during comment section later, or if I wanted to make a final comment, would that be no?
That would, that would be during your testimony, which will be in a few minutes. I want to have the, the board ask any questions that they have, and then we'll open it up to parties being able to testify. And then after that, anyone not a party who has questions can ask those questions. And then we close them, then the parties will give closings, then we close out the hearing for executive session.
Thank you.
Backup generators, solar works great, I like my solar, solid. You're gonna have another one, something else in place.
Yeah, there's battery backup.
Okay, so you, you have a fallback line, it's not just that. And is it gonna get posted? I would assume, Hertzlers have posted all these years, so I would assume they're gonna post again as Hertzlers, because you're only leasing land, and your only problem's gonna be coming also. And your only problem's going to be coming off state game land. If they know it's still herds whose and it says it's still herds whose, they can have it prosecuted. Correct?
Yeah, I mean, we're leasing their, we're leasing it from them.
Right, but if they're, they should.
Like no trespassing sign?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean.
The purple, the purple on the trees, call it what you want, game commission considers that. So I'm just saying, because of people coming off and losing your perception on where you're at.
Sure. Yeah, we can, we can work with the herds whose to make sure that that property.
I, I, they posted it since moving kids and went to school together, so I would assume mentally, they're going to post it to protect their land because you don't want somebody who aren't getting hurt and then stealing you because you didn't put anything on it. So, as I said, because there are game lands there, it would be better to protect everybody and as long as they think it's herds whose, they're not going to come looking for your stuff.
Would you agree to posting the property as private property, no trespassing as a condition?
Yeah, maybe just work with the property owner to make sure it's done, so that way if they're already doing it, we just check with them and they say, yeah, it's done. But, yeah.
I'm sure they do.
Good question, because the hunters come down, they cover my two acres that.
It's incidental, it's not intentional. Some people are intentional, but I don't believe everybody else is, I think, hey, you started out, you're tracking something or you're looking for something?
Anyone else on the board have any questions?
It appears there, there are no further questions. At this point, we'll have the, the parties give their testimony, each party will need to be sworn before giving testimony, and we'll start with Colonel Cobb.
Okay.
So the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth left behind.
I do. Miss Liden, ma'am, respectfully and non-confrontationally, I fully understand the economic reality of the township and generated funds. Is there any course for residents and non-residents to see the funds received by the township for this exemption?
For this exemption, I think there's no tax exemption being granted, if that's what you're asking.
No, you said to raise funds for Robinson.
Oh, I think, I think you're thinking of a question asked by Mrs. Brightenstein about tax revenues from commercial uses.
Understood.
And you can, if this use were to be approved, you would be able to make a right to know request.
Understood.
For, and you would, and for ta, for the amount of taxes paid to the township, if that's what you're, if that's what it is, you'd be able to make a right to know request.
And our, Counselor, very nice presentation, these guys have their act together. What are, our concern is additional exemptions to the agricultural preservation. Are there any other exemptions in the works?
I'm not aware of any with the board. This is not, this is not an exemption, what, what this is, is a, a use permitted within the agricultural preservation district. There are non-agricultural uses that are permitted within agricultural preservation districts. Some of those would include single-family residences in some agricultural districts, others that allow some sort, some types of commercial uses in agricultural preservation districts. All of them allow timbering and forestry. So this is not, I would not call this an exemption to an agricultural preservation district. Yeah, this is, this is the time for, for testimony. Do you have any testimony with respect to the application?
Negative.
All right, and Mr. Steppin, do you have any testimony? And you need to be sworn first.
Excuse me?
You need to be sworn to testify. It's time to testify as to give you on the, against your position on the application. This is the time for you to give your testimony on your position as to the application and offer any evidence you may have.
Okay, I don't really have any hard evidence to add, except God worked construction, I grew up, I mean, Ally Kennepoles, Owen Haas, Frankfurt Arsenal, Philadelphia Electric, and construction I-95. And as kids, we got everywhere, all the time. We got, we got any horse, we got, kids, you climb walls, you go through fences, you explore. So, you know, a camera on the wall. I understand, well, yeah, thieves, somebody who wants to blow it up, but thieves would get in there and start a fire and think it would be really cool. You know, it's kind of after the fact security. I, I don't know, like I said, I, you can go in the arsenal now, it's privatized, and you can go look at their, where they store their powder. It's, it's giant wall, 20 feet at the bottom, 10 feet at the top, and that, stone, not dirt, and stone buildings and, it's a little more expensive, but, not that I want that across the street from my house either, and it is directly across my sight looking out my front window, so if it goes, I have nothing in between. It goes down and back up. I'm going to, you know, along with the, most I hope over the dead, we're ready to light a fire. I hope nothing ever happens, I can pretty much surmise, it's all passion and it's, this is already past tense, it's happening, but I wish it would have. I grew up next to that, I moved out here for 32 years, obviously to get away from that. And them places were secure and there's no way they could explode, and they exploded. You don't want to be near it, you don't want to experience nobody does, you know? So, there's a lot of talk about the land and this and this and this, but the bottom line is the boom. When it happens, you know, there's umbrella insurance. What does that do for my kids? You know, but that's not explained. You know, do we all get insurance, do we get a, you know, a write-out, what insurance is our homes, do we get anything on paper, or is it all just like, like here? Umbrella insurance, that's it, that's what you, that's what you're going to get, whatever that is.
Can I any further?
No.
Mr. Attorney Strong, do you have any, first of all, do you have any questions for Mr. Cobb?
I do not.
And do you have any questions for Mr. Steppin?
I do not.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for Mr. Cobb or Mr. Steppin?
No. Nope.
Okay, and Mr. Steppin, any questions for Mr. Cobb?
Not my neighbors.
And Carwood, do you have any questions for Mr. Steppin or Mr. Cobb?
No, it's safe to make the no questions.
Okay. All right, then we'll, then we'll get to your, your testimony, okay? We need to be sworn.
So the testimony about to give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth left behind.
I do. I didn't come with any prepared, my wife and I just came with a whole number of questions and concerns. You know, we can compete for the most direct, like, sight, sight, sightline toward this facility here as we're due north, right there looking across that field at it. At the same time, I like that view because I love living in an agricultural community. I like having farms nearby, and I have a rough idea how much you can earn on an acre of corn or soybeans or milking cows. I think I work fairly hard every day, and I got up at five o'clock today to hit the office, and my day's still going, but at 5:00 AM, the herds whose were up an hour before me already milking the cows, like every day of the year, 365. So given that, I mean, to have farms like this in our community, they, they need another revenue source. And I think that's a good part of what we have going on here. There are a lot of alternatives, could have been 100 homes across the street from you now, could have been a lot of things. I think you guys have done a rather good job of answering a lot of the questions and concerns of the community, you're not new to this. And yeah, we're requested to keep being good stewards of the land of the herds whose and of the community, but I get where they're coming from on that, so not sure I came here to make a rare endorsement of the process, but in order that I come here to, to speak against it necessarily. Frankly, as I come out, I'm pretty pleased with what I've heard and seen and appreciate the support of the farming community that I live in, and that's the biggest reason I'm going to leave my comment.
Don't give any, any questions?
I do.
Okay, Cobb?
Curiosity, do we know the elevation of the site?
Like relative to Hopewell Road or?
If you just give us the elevation, we can figure out, if you're above it, then the eight foot berm is less, less preventative from blast damage.
Elevation of both, see that?
What elevation would you like, the top or the bottom?
Yeah. It's roughly 748.
748.
748, thank you.
I'm sorry, 748?
748.
And do you have any, any questions for Mr. Carwood?
Negative.
Mr. Steppin, do you have any questions for Mr. Carwood?
No.
And the board have any questions?
Can go wherever you want. I want you all to know that when they came in here, they're, they're invested in your community. That was one of the things that struck me about them. Number two, your statement is well taken as farming is not an easy job anymore. If you want to do it for fun, that's great, but to live it, it's seven days a week, 365 days a year. And you do need to supplement your income. I do not believe that herds whose in any way, shape or form will put their families or any of you at risk. The fact that that's going in the middle of the woods isn't going to actually impede your serenity, your nature, because it's not out on the road. They don't want people to know it's there. And I think if you have problems, they're going to do the best they can to work with you. And as.
Do you have any questions for?
No, you made your statement, Joan, that we have, we don't have a choice. You have to allow some things, and if you don't, we can be told they have to go wherever they want to put them.
So the next witness, and Mrs. Carwood, do you have any statement? All right. All right, this is the time then for any questions from those who, who did not enter appearance. Does anyone have any questions for any of the witnesses or parties? It appears there are none, so if you'd like to give a, give a brief closing?
Yeah, so I guess first, just your question to applicants, exhibits A1 through A3 be admitted into and made a part of the record. And we've been going for almost two hours, and I don't think I can hear from the attorney any longer. So I, I will just offer up that we have appreciated the township and the township's willingness to sort of engage with us and work through this process for, Keith and I were talking in the parking lot before we came in about how many years it's been, but it's, it's been a very good process, and I think a healthy one to go through. And so hopefully, this is the, the culmination of that, and I believe that we've demonstrated that we comply with all of the ordinance requirements for this proposed use and have addressed any and all concerns that folks might have. So with that, I'll sit down and just ask you to approve the application. And with respect to the modification of landscaping, again, just reiterate that we will work with the township on landscaping and, you know, any other applicable ordinances as we go through the land development plan review process. You would, you would see us again, but thank you again for your, for your time and consideration.
As far as the exhibits, does anyone have any objections to any of the exhibits, anyone who's a party? And board, any discussion on the exhibits? All right, then exhibits A1 through A3 are, are admitted. Any closing statements by any of the parties?
I'd like to thank the township for the very well-run and very informative get-together.
Thank you. Mr. Steppin, any, any closing statement?
Same, I'm glad we got a notification, at least, because all these other things come along and nobody knows about, and they even come here and have a say. I don't know when the meetings are. But it is every, there are Tuesday.
Yes, and, and it is, it's on the township website, the agendas are posted, so.
See, that's a trouble, someone else don't do, computer.
We're working on, we're working on these, they're getting.
That's exactly what we.
Yeah. I'm working on it.
And Mr. and Mrs. Carwood, do you have any closing statements?
No, thank you.
Do we want to recess into executive session?
8:55, we go into executive session.
Were you based on it?
Uh, Harrisburg.
Bit of a chance to make.
I see a lot, the fact that we usually just say, I'm curious if they're going to approve this roof coming in, which is cold run that dead ends here. I really didn't think that was wise, actually.
I'll show my wife that.
That is correct, that floods during big storms.
It doesn't really look like that, so you're not wanting the area that is absolutely underwater sometimes.
Yeah, yeah.
That's accurate, more accurate than what you'll see 99 out of 100 days out there. But when it does look like that, that'd been a problem.
Yeah, yeah, I can imagine.
Yep, and you're aware again, is it two?
I don't know, it's three.
This guy right here, so if you look across that field, it's a beautiful field that slopes down there, I just see a mobile down here sometimes.
Good spot.
And now, just going like a quick radius, if that's a 400 footer, and you gotta be 1965 off that, the hole, and I'm not going to have a problem.
Clusters of homes for a while. You've got to be pros and cons to it, right?
Yeah. That was one of the things about being up against the game lands is that it takes away that it's a future possibility that you're going to have some building up here.
And look, I, you know, I'm as, not in my backyard as, well, I guess I'm not as the next guy, but I was going to say.
Yeah, you could have picked one right over here, there's a little town hall down there, maybe they could have started something, little down the road would have been easier on us.
But, but it's really helpful.
How this all coming back, I think it was very good, I was involved in it. And like, another magazine site, we had driven a couple of their, I had floated a couple of them with them, I was just looking at anywhere. And I found this big plot of land here, and I thought, oh, it's farm, oh, there's, there's earth land, woodland nearby, like there's, if I can build a house on the side of the property line. And so I sent one of my guys to go visit the farm, and he said, oh yeah, had a good time. And I met the herster. Turns out my grandfather built, didn't work on, with his older, they were on their farm. My dad, I think, did work there.
Did you meet Truman?
He was, I did not, I didn't know Truman.
He's, well, he's their father, so he's.
Yeah, he's still, still there. So this whole thing had a first class, Truman has, you know, two.
I can't be.
I was going to say.
Before it went anywhere. And here times out, we have all kinds of other connections that, and I didn't, I never knew him from Adam before all this. But that was how it all started, yeah, look at this thing, where's their plot of land? And that house was nearby. Without explosives, just quarry.
Look, I hardly realized one thing I wanted, this little flag.
Rescinding my comments.
I'm trying to think, is there anything to help us on it, isn't it?
We will back it up in that one, it's on a big rectangle, but this thing acts, so we can't access on the cold run technically, they're all the way up there. So I wanted that little flag.
You know.
Jimmy, Joe, you won't.
Yeah.
I hadn't noticed that before.
I'm sure somewhere there's a reason for that, somewhere back in there.
Well, I'm sure, someone wanted to access something.
Oh, no, no, they wanted to have access to that piece of ground from Hopewell. Oh, no, no, they wanted to have access to that piece of ground from Hopewell, just in case at some point, so if they ever needed access off of this roof for any reason, this retains that right for them, which also blocks us from cold run access, so, um, it's kind of a, getting a yang there, but.
We've only been there twenty-seven years, so.
You know what, it was right across there.
Yeah, that's it, because it's right this.
This is.
Yeah, it comes right in. She was mentioning that, she was worried about that too, and actually.
Well, yeah, that was my feeling.
Well, we heard about the spot for it, couldn't have done better than that, I was afraid of a couple locations here, and I wasn't sure.
I was afraid it was going to go up this, because this is a, this is a flood place, you know, when it rains, and I thought, that's gonna be a problem.
Wetlands and permits and bog turtles, no way to go with that.
Now, bog turtles don't matter, just build a casino.
What's that?
We put the bog turtle crossing down anyway.
Straight, I wrote down.
Yeah, put dirt inside the pipe, hands and knees spreading dirt inside the pipe.
Because it's a downhill.
Bog turtles could go underneath the casino drog lake.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, well. Yep, those were expensive bog turtle crossings, I can assure you.
Yep. The, uh, the berm, so that, is that just compacted earth, or is that anything else?
You build them a little higher, you mentioned how, you know, you build them a little higher, knowing that they're going to settle a little, so you go higher than is required, so when it's all said and done, you get.
I'll tell you, there's plenty of clay.
Oh, yes, you need some clay, I'll tell you where to get it, and just replace it with some nice fluffy topsoil. Yeah, well, physics wins, if you've got big berms around that, and you, no matter how big the explosion, I mean, it's going to want to take it up if it's got a nice pole down there.
Well, they haven't, there's a, like, inside, you can't have any ferrous metal, so you can only have non-ferrous, either no metal fester, so you gotta glue all the internal stuff up, or you're non-ferrous, you know, brass or some other type of non-ferrous, so you have no chance of spark.
That makes sense, yep.
So, no, so they can just, all of that.
Like working in a refinery.
Minimizing the risk.
Yeah, you gotta.
You just can't even have the stuff in it.
Exactly, right, yep.
Yeah, yeah, you know, there's no smoking, and all of that. Back in the day, when I was a kid growing up, sign up, say explosives, keep out.
And now it's like an average.
Yep. I'm gonna try, David down in the tar.
Are you referring that for talk shows?
Yeah. I'm tired of waiting.
All right, we get back into regular session nine zero three.
All right, so. We're back on record. All right, do we have, um, we have a decision to approve these subject conditions?
Just going to stand in executive session, we have decisions, and we can make.
Okay, and, and are the, are the conditions attached, number one, compliance with all applicable regulations, including regulations to Department of Environmental Protection and Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, Paddles, Explosives?
That the owners, that the owner and the applicant will work together to ensure adequate
no trespassing signs of property?
Yes.
That the operator and applicant will use a backup generator for its security gate and other systems? And true replacement in accordance with the Township Planning Commission loading letter? All right, so, so, call for a motion?
I'm going to make a motion for, for affirm the condition of this hearing with those additional conditions as mentioned by Attorney London.
And also attached to everything DEP and everyone else has to say for you.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second that motion.
Not at all, this is Julie.
Yes.
Mr. Rose.
Yes.
Mr. Pittler.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Thank you for your.
And since you've been, how, very invested in your community, and you're taking care of them, and we are putting our faith in you to do what's right for them. I know how long you've been around.
If anyone wants to get or leave, so you know.
Thank you.
Is she not the same broad?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You could have, you could have added.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Good night.
Yes, finally.
So, hi. Will you be calling?
We will, we will continue on regular meeting. Is there anybody here with any citizens' concerns? Concerns, Rich corresponds.
Okay, there is nothing additional correspondence from what we had from our workshop.
Okay, thank you, and I think you can be.
Good evening, Gord, uh, first thing I have on my list is the three color choices, which I, I actually have one, but you guys can choose, um, so what I did was, I actually spoke to Jen, I spoke to my wife, I spoke to somebody else's wife, and I said, hey, if you were going to paint our building, and I showed them the picture, which would you prefer, or which would you choose? And they came up with overcast, and if the board would choose, and how there's that ring around up top, they think Kings Gray would look to be smart, cast that around.
Oh, so you're taking two shades of gray, it sounds good to me.
Overcast, what's it?
Overcast and Kings Gray.
Kings Gray.
Yeah, you took, took two shades of gray and all stayed.
Overcast would be the building, and the Kings Gray would be the top. The stripe around the top. But we can do it all in one color, whatever you guys prefer.
Yeah, I don't like the contrast, I'm with what they said, that works.
Anybody opposed?
I don't think we opposed.
I can buy a pink with a blue gray. So, was that your pick?
Kind of.
But no, it wasn't.
Yellow, green. Do you want a quick motion to approve those colors?
I'll make a motion to approve the colors.
Bring the, improve.
All right, roll call, Mrs. Joy.
Yeah.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Pittler.
Yes.
All right, the next thing I have on my list is, I'd like to introduce Amanda.
I don't.
Please stand, come up. So, Amanda is our new admin assistant, she comes to us with fifteen years of administrative operations. Um, she spent her last ten years in business, as a business office manager, where she oversaw cable, human resources, financial compliance, scheduling, marketing, events. She was very proficient in Microsoft Excel, Outlook, and PowerPoint. She did an outstanding job in the entire hiring process. We feel that she's definitely a valuable asset to our team, and help move Robson Township to our position.
All right. Congratulations.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Welcome to.
You don't have to say congratulations.
I'd take that, cheers.
Try to be down to half an hour.
You know, what if you were taller, it would've been an hour, and you have it within a half hour, so herpes fall.
Besides that, Gord, I don't have anything on my, um, last, if you could, uh.
All right, Gord, I believe, um, Chief, when I spoke today, we had one thing in our old business was the MOU regarding an agreement for the union, and I think he wanted to move that here, if that would be so appropriate, uh, because it was tied to his desire, but it is in their old business, we'll discuss it later.
It is. I have a problem with it.
Which MOU are we talking about here?
The one for the administrative assistant.
We've got an envelope we want to discuss at some point, that's not part of it, or it is?
That, that was the envelope from, from Tuesday, or from Thursday.
And that's not the MOU you're talking about?
That is the.
Uh, that, that needs to be discussed later. I got a couple legal questions on that.
Do we have the right to, like, did the other four of you often read it? Did the other four of you have an issue with it?
I, I, I have not seen it.
You got lost in the.
It's creating more than just that, it's what I'm referring to, so we're going to need some qualifications on that.
Well, I asked, there's four other members on the board, Mr. Pittler, I'm asking them, if they have an issue with it.
I'm saying it needs to wait, and I have legal questions, if the board's denying me those questions, or so be it, but this seems to be a, a question of opening a union contract between Labor Council, there's more involved than just this.
An assistant.
And our solicitor hasn't even seen it.
An assistant is an assistant, Mr. Pittler, if you look at the previous things, which I'm sure you did.
In the previous assistants we've had, they were not members of the union, is my understanding. Mr. Steve, can you help me with that?
They're all out, and we got them all out.
No, you got some.
I guess, I guess the question is, um, the union, is there, I, it's my understanding that the union is, there's uniformed officers that have their collective bargaining unit, and then there are the broken public work and, work employees who have their, have their union as, as well, they're included in that. Is, so I'm assuming that she would be included with the Public Works Union?
Yes.
Yes, that's exactly what they were talking about.
Well, if Mr. Mr. Pittler has questions, we should have, since Joan hasn't got the copy, if you could send her your questions.
Yeah, I, I would be glad to answer any questions on those issues.
When you read it, I mean.
Okay, that's fine, yes.
So, let's talk next month.
That's fine.
All right, we'll make sure we have a, a copy of that, and I will also have the original next month.
You hired her without her consent? No. I thought, she can, right, I mean, she can join the union at a later time.
She's on probation anyway, right, Chief?
Right. Ninety days. Right, and all these are general retirement subjects, probationary period. Right.
So, all right, so if you can get, give me a question.
Can do.
Anything else, Rich, correspondents and police?
So, for there, no, we do have, obviously, your finance reports, monthly expenses and treasury reports are included in Thursday's packet, and sorcery report is included in this one. I would note that with regard to that, there was a discussion last night at the RTMA, because this is actually a lien list, for the RTMA was provided to them, also provided to you here. What that discussion entailed was a crosswalk between our agent report and the lien list, make sure we're on track. We've, we've asked, Mr. Steve will be working with us to do that on a Monday, latest, after receives that, and then we'll take a look at that, now, Attorney London and I will take a look at that to see where we can find any disconnects and get those things correct, specifically as we relate to moving porch payoffs, so we want to make sure those things are aligned.
Right, and our, right, our office, to elaborate, our office had provided RTMA and, and the township with a list of active liens, which are a combination of what Kozlov Stout has filed, and what Orlando and Hartman law firms had filed, some go back as far as two thousand nine, and the list provides a property owned, property and owner information amount of the lien, and also tracks the revival dates, so that a decision can be revived, reviving certain liens, whether it's worth, uh, to prevent the lien from losing its priority. We, in the past twenty-four hours, we also looked in, we also spoke with the pro bonitaries' office about getting every, finding every sewer lien on the books for the township to compare with, with our list. We contacted the pro bonotary, we were told that a report can be run either by attorney or we can review and open up every entry where Robinson's a plaintiff in municipal claim case, to see if it is a sewer lien and, and track it, that, and some, some municipal liens are enforcement liens, others are sidewalk liens, park maintenance liens, so it could be a time-consuming process, but it is possible, but it's the board's decision how far you want that to be taken, but as far as comparing the lien list with the sewer liency list, I think that's a reverse step to start.
And we might make a motion to accept your monthly expenses, treasury report, sorcery report. So, a motion to have a second. You must say, roll call, Mr. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Pittler, no. Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Okay, Gord, uh, the first two notes here in the manager's comments will be for discussion in our executive session this evening, so I will move those to there. Mr. Running, I did speak about a summer hire, and again, we can both discuss that with you when we go to executive. Uh, the last piece here, uh, so our, our Giger Town Area Joint Authority, currently there are four members on the board. Those four members represent two from Union Township, one from Robinson Township, and one who is representative of both Union and Robinson Township. What the Dodge Board is asking to do, Peg McLean is a resident of Robinson Township, however, she represents both Union and Robinson Township currently. The issue and concern is that the other member of the township, right now, Nancy Beaton is not always available. What that then causes is during their meetings, they are unable to complete a vote, so they require at least one member from Union Township and one member from Robinson Township to approve any kind of motion that they make in order to move forward. They can't do that because right now Peg McLean essentially represents both, both townships, so, and that, and that's a null vote, if you will. So, what they're asking to do is at least temporarily, until they are able to obtain another member for their board, they would like to move Peg McLean to represent solely Robinson Township, uh, and at that point in time, they would be able to continue their forward movement, when they get one on, then Peg would move back to represent them. So, I think we would need a motion for that to, to do so, uh, to, to move Peg to represent solely Robinson Township at this point, until such time as a new member is found and we can return her back to represent.
I would make that motion, to move Peg.
Question out.
Yes, sir.
So, you have to get that approved by Union as well?
I believe that they're going to have to put that in front of their board, as far as not, but again, this is for our representative right now, so yes, but I believe that they'll have to discuss that Union Township, that's, that's for them to, to work through. I will discuss that with the chair of that board.
You're taking their representative away from her.
No, 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 no. Peg McLean is not their representative.
She is both.
She is not. She, she is the one more member that represents both townships, okay, but she cannot vote as a member of one or the other, so that what I'm sharing with you is that in order for them to actually complete any motions, they would have to have her, if Nancy Beaton is not there, and she has not been there late, they can't really move forward if she's not representing solely Robinson Township.
But she's still a member of both now.
She, she is, but she's, she can't vote that way, she cannot vote as a member of Robinson, that does not count.
You're repeating yourself, she's a member of both and, and.
She represents both, but.
She got to resign one, or they'd have to accept her resignation before anything.
This is temporary, this is temporary.
No, because actually you have Union people, Robinson people, and.
They have two Union, they have two members representing solely Union Township.
This is kind of, consider if it were a council, those who are sitting council, you'd call it an at-large position.
Correct, that would be a other way to put it, thank you, John.
So, Joy may have motioned and have pegged Jesse Robinson in. Anybody want to make a second for that? I'll make a second, roll call, Mr. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Pittler, vote yes, but we should hear from you. And then, Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Let me ask Rich to make sure Union's doing the same.
I will, I will check in with Lee on that, who's the chair of our board. She asked that to be placed here first, okay. Uh, with that, that's all I have for the seating, I don't know if there's any updates from Thursday, we do not want to remove anything from there at this point in time from the supervisors. No representatives here for, like, fire companies seating, and then you'll notice the, the most reports that we do have.
Do you want to make a motion to supplement some reports in our possession?
Make a motion to supplement Nancy reports in our possession?
All right, I'll second, roll call, Mr. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Pittler.
Although, no.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Good evening, Gord. First item under my agenda was covered in my report. The Rockholt Woods group has submitted both a planning time.
The Rock Hollow Woods group has submitted both a planning time extension, which is a ninety-day MPC time extension associated with their amended plan of final record, and also a construction time extension associated with their standing escrow for their remaining improvements. If you recall, these two items are somewhat tied together. They are working through the planning process associated with amended plan of record, so that we would then consider release of, of the funds we're holding for them to complete their outstanding improvements associated with a building they're not currently wishing to construct. So both of those are in my report. Again, that is a ninety-day MPC planning extension and a one-year time extension.
How many extensions have we granted over?
Which one?
Do you want to call?
Uh, we are on one year. This, this is the first, they requested a one-year extension on the planning extension, so this would be the second one. Again, they're only looking at ninety days this time. This is probably, this is probably the fourth or fifth construction time extension that I've wrote before you. However, I think it's the second since they completed their, their paving of the entrance drive, et cetera, and they started working through this amended plan of record process.
And they've made pro, they've made progress with it, it's not just sitting there.
They have, so, so two items to consider here, and, and your planning commission as well, first of all, yous. The first of which is, they're, again, no longer wishing to construct the learning center itself. So there were some other improvements constructed on the site that created a zoning issue as part of this plan amendment process. They're working on a deep consolidation to address that. That's somewhat of the smaller hurdle here, and they have no issue doing that. The other one is that there were some building improvements done to an existing structure out there, and they're working with Technicon to address the permitting associated with that, so that they can then come back and bring this plan before you. That's kind of the long lead item. This is a non-residential building permit. As we all know, they're a little bit more in-depth than a simple addition to your home or renovation of a bathroom, and Technicon's been working with that, dealing through that process.
I would like to make a motion for that conscious times, since she's.
Yes, it's making progress. I will make that motion. They're getting there. It'll soon be off our list.
I'll second the motion.
Do you want to call Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Pedlar?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Also attached to my report, we did receive the GP eleven permit, which allows us to remove the temporary culvert in Zion Road and work towards installing a new culvert. The new culvert has a seventy-six by forty-eight inch opening, and it's concrete. It will require a rather large piece of equipment to set it. So our intention is to bid this project out. I did provide a construction cost estimate for you. We are looking in the neighborhood of sixty thousand dollars. I will caution the board, you know, the more I've looked into this, this, again, is going to require a large piece of equipment to set this. I don't think this is in the neighborhood of the previous culvert we set, which was a couple hundred thousand dollars. But I, I think I'm in the ballpark. I'm not as comfortable telling you that I'm heavy on my number as I usually am. So I think, you know, you're probably, might be a little bit more than what I'm estimating, so. Yeah, ju, just so, just so you're aware, I just want to let you know that. We have the permit, we're ready to put that project out to bid, if the board's willing to authorize it. And again, this is kind of a situation where it would be nice to, to try to catch a window before.
Before we get to that.
Yeah. We have a, currently have a thirty-six inch culvert in there now, plastic. So we are undersized at the moment. DEP was aware of that as well, so.
All right, I'll make a motion to authorize you prepare the RTMA for the culvert construction.
I will second that.
No call, Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Pedlar?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Still is.
Well, I know, that's why getting it done is beneficial.
Final agenda item for your action tonight, I believe Rich has in his possession, the sewage planning module. This is the exemption request associated with Old Hickory Buildings, which are the two non-residential sites out of Lieutenant Cross from Penske, for them to submit the DEP for their online sewage facilities. That requires a signature of the county.
We just have to give Richie authority to sign it?
And we just have to make a motion to approve the sewage planning exemption.
Correct, and then it goes to DEP. Testing has been observed by Quinn Howler of Technicon, everything's in order for this.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the sewage planning exemption.
And you've got it.
They're all hit, created all. We have a second.
I'll second, Rick.
No call, Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Pedlar?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
No, I don't, yes.
I do have two quick updates I would like for you not to drag this out. First one, street work, you authorized in my absence. We do have that prepared, both contracts, both the oil and chip and the paving. The first advertisement will be March twenty-seventh, with the second one April first, and hope to have a recommendation for you at your April fifteen meeting. Second item is, there was a second utility coordination for Rock, meeting, for Rock Hollow Road Bridge today. Waiting on direction from Med Ed as far as how they're gonna de-energize their electric lines. As soon as we have solid dates for you, we'll, we'll forward them to the board so you know when that looks good.
More progress. It's cheap, froze, more progress.
That's all I have, unless you have questions.
Have you got questions, Rich?
Nope.
Hey, good evening, board members. First item is the PAM's contract update. I had circulated to the board last month of comments on the agreement, and I have not received any further comments back from, from members of the board. Do you know, does anyone have any comments on the proposed agreement? The only comment that I had was that in the twenty-twenty agreement between PAMs and Gaja, there was a thirty thousand dollar bond posted, and the township official handling funds would be required to be bonded. So I would want to see a similar protection from outside contractor. Does anyone have any comments beyond that that I could pass along to be included in the final agreement?
Let's look at it finally, and then we'll go.
All right, so I'll pass it along to them, that this is the, as the suggests, is the only proposed revision. And then the ordinance, there was a draft ordinance that had been provided to us. That had to be modified because, and I circulated that to the board at the same time, because it only covered activities as a collector of delinquent sewage user fees. I made changes to the draft ordinance circulated to the board for collection of both current and delinquent, and with the agreement and fee schedules to be attached. I also changed the sample ordinance to allow fee schedules to be amended by resolution. Did anyone in the board have any comments on that, on the, any draft ordinance?
Manager, Scott.
Okay, all right, well, again, I'll, I'll send that to PAMs as, as what we believe to be our final version, and then, then on next month's agenda, we can have full adoption of the approval of the agreement and consideration of the ordinance for May.
John, what do you think the, the maximum they deal with, that they're gonna deal with from PAMs is? Do we need to have higher?
We, we may. I'm going, I'll be talking to the manager as far as what's the maximum amount of funds that will be handled that would be appropriate for bond, because for Gaja, it would be considerably less, because there, it's a small system that doesn't have a large number of households, it has a larger number of households.
Absolutely, and that's the only reason I was asking, because the bond definitely needs to be high.
Bond should be the amount of, the maximum amount of money handled, just like it is with any township official handling funds.
Right.
The reality of the question.
Well, with Gaja, they're collecting every month, not every quarter. So there is, it's a sort of lot more per capita being collected here. But the other thing is, is there any point in sending this PAM's contract to the sewer authorities for review? To see, well, do we have any things that we should, that should be included in it?
We can put that on the agenda for the next meeting, though. Because that, that would then be break before, break before this meeting, so that not any comments can be passed along, so that's fine. Anything else, huh?
No call.
Okay. All right, so I, all right, so we'll finalize, we'll finalize the agreement. We can also send that to the authority for comments at their next meeting. All right, next item, Old Hickory Buildings, that was covered under the engineer's report, I don't have any, anything on that. Eleven fifty Buck Hollow Road, the, the owners of the property have contacted Ted Nelson and have also contacted me. They've had a matter in front of the zoning hearing board, because there's a pole building on the property that doesn't meet the front yard setback. That is the only building on the property that was on the site of a former greenhouse on a commercial property. And what they're asking for is an agreement with the township that would allow them to, to go ahead with the construction of their home with the pole building still on the property, and either, and proceed to the zoning hearing board, or I believe the zoning hearing board has already made a decision.
They've made a decision, and if you looked at that decision.
Yes.
It's problematic.
The decision is problematic?
Well, it, it seems like this should not even be here now, does it not? The building that's in the right way.
Building, the building shouldn't be there in the right.
So that should have been removed before, the way I understand it.
Well, I understand the relief was denied by the zoning hearing board. I don't know whether there's an, there's an appeal pending or not. I'm assuming that they're not.
But the ownership's changed, correct?
The ownership, right, is Hannah, Hannah Schultz and Jordan Santos from the property, it's changed, it's changed, it's not the greenhouse anymore.
Sells what previously was the problem.
Yeah. So the request, the request was for agreement to allow them to, to construct the house before tearing down the greenhouse. What is the, what is the preference of the board?
If they want to build their home and they want to rip it down after, why is it really hurting? I mean.
Well, it's a non-conforming structure and.
But if they're willing to rip it down.
So why not rip it down before?
Maybe because their funds will.
Well, it's a hard question. Is it truly just a greenhouse?
Well, it's a pole building.
It's not a pole building. It was originally a greenhouse, probably fifteen years ago, and it was torn down, but what remained was the pad. The cells brought, bought the property, they constructed a pole building on that property. The issue came to light when somebody noticed that there was actually a camper, I believe, inside the pole building, and that it was being occupied regularly. So that was then brought before the zoning hearing board, it was denied relief, and then the cells proceeded to sell the property, I'm making a synopsis of this, and it was sold to the Santa, Mr. Santos, and so here we stand, the pole building was not taken down, it remained on the property. I believe the intent, Mr. Santos, maybe to use that just to store materials in the process of building the single-family dwelling that they proposed, and then it would come down following that.
Are they building your own home?
Yes, they are, sir.
Right, we'd come, we'd come down unless they were looking at zoning relief, which they weren't.
Which they were not able to do.
And I don't, I don't believe it is on appeal. I think it's been more than thirty days at this point.
I believe so, yes, ma'am.
So the question, so the question is whether they're willing to enter into an agreement to allow them to keep that on the property during the construction.
It makes sense if they're gonna store their materials in there, if they're building their own house.
Yeah, if they're not gonna live there.
They're not gonna live in it, right.
And they're not gonna store it, I don't know, that seems nice, that could be nice, and let them store their construction.
And if they push it in there, you go back and press it.
I guess the question is how much, if, if you're going to agree to it, how much time are you willing to give them?
Can we know when they plan on starting construction?
I, I think they want to start construction as soon as possible.
Well, then the reality is, they'd want to be done before it gets cold out for the end of the year.
Why wouldn't you let them set the time schedule, or propose a time schedule?
I didn't say, I didn't say we would.
Instead of you coming up with one, why don't they propose a time schedule, and then you can keep on to that?
I mean, I'm hoping they want to be done by July, I guess they don't have.
Right, right, exactly, but we're gonna just. We're gonna suck it up another month, Harold.
It, it sounds like this thing's been denied by the zoning hearing board like twice now, because, and they keep changing names. So it's just gonna fall on, and you're gonna end up taking the court to try to get them to have.
But if these people want to build their house there, and all they're gonna do is store it in it, we tell them within a certain period of time, you're done.
Why, why don't we give them twelve months?
Yeah, they're not, I don't think they're gonna go twelve months.
Well, why don't we give them twelve months to, to take it down and be only used for, for storage purposes during construction?
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes sense, because the storage, storage.
You're putting some kind of.
You're putting. We're trying to make sure they don't somehow convert that into building, that's.
Right. Right, and that's, that, I mean, that's, that's the concern, is it doesn't become an accessory dwelling, and it doesn't become a permanent, uh, accessory building.
I do believe I was reminded that they, they have, I believe, until around the end of July, based on their building loan, and that may have been part of the original packet, we can, we can confirm that as well.
And then.
Right, it's part of the zoning, the zoning.
Yeah, see, we're, we're gonna screw them harder if we don't do it now.
Yeah, go until the end of the year.
Yeah.
I would like to make a motion to let them keep the structure for storage purposes only, and they have till the end of the year.
Storage purposes only in building the home.
Yes.
Search, construction storage.
Yeah.
And then they can, till the end of the year, so more or less not. You want to make that motion?
I'm ready to move.
I'll second that.
No call, Mr. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Pedlar?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes, but I'm gonna add that only because they were not the ones that put that up.
Correct.
If they put that up, we're not gonna set a precedent on, just because you did it wrong, we're gonna let you put your stuff in.
Right, agreed.
It's not their fault, they want it as is, they, so, yes.
They're an innocent purchaser.
I agree, I agree. Makes perfect sense.
All right, all right, I'll prepare, I'll prepare an agreement. And lien list we've already covered, so that, that can be in the report, unless anybody has any questions. Evans, no.
Thank you. Mary, public works.
Evening, board. Only thing I have, we're still just waiting on the agreement for, for the Deco trailer. Our old paper that was twenty with Deco is now only disavowed once that is sold. The monies will be split between, obviously, Robinson and Deco, and the monies will be used to offset the cost of the, the Deco trailer.
The last you mentioned to me, I think it was this morning, when we had a conversation, sixty-seven?
No, it's up to seventy-eight hundred.
Hey, hey. Good stuff, so, this morning's topic on quick.
It was exciting. It went up, yay.
Great stuff.
Nothing, anything to store, nothing exciting?
No.
That's a rude thing, because it's eight months.
All right, Rich?
I don't have anything under Park and Recreation at this point in time. They have asked for a meeting to discuss a, a structure for the batting cages, so they're going to meet next Monday. That was advertised, or actually was advertised as a, excuse me, it'd be tomorrow, be advertised for a meeting for them. That will be held at the administrative building on, on Monday, the twenty-fourth, at six P M. Again, this is for them to discuss and then present to you, the board, for the April meeting, their proposal on the contract that they would like to see the batting cage framing. So we have the netting, that was donated to us, we just need to have the, the, again, the framing for that. So they'll bring that to our attention, and we'll put that in front of the April meeting. That just came up the other day. E A C, there was nothing, and nothing under new business, and I believe we've covered everything under old business at this point in time.
All right, nothing else? Before we go to executives, we'd like to be transparent with our residents. I would like to have a discussion of what happened at the office on Friday, with one of our supervisors and the staff.
On Friday?
On Friday.
I don't know what happened on Friday. All right, does that have to be on, should that be on, make a motion to amend the agenda?
Well, when the, the agenda for, it's going to be discussed in executive session, is it personnel?
No, no, this is only separate, totally separate incident.
This is, this is a separate?
It is.
Separate incident?
Their supervisor in the office on Friday, and I would like them to discuss with, in public, what occurred in front of a representative of a large business of this township who donates to this township.
Okay, Scott, we're listening.
I don't, I wasn't in there. I would like to be concerned, he's a citizen.
He, he can raise it. He, he, he can raise it, he can raise it.
It's a citizen's concern, Scott, so, you've been on the agenda, so I don't know what's, what's happening, so...
You wanna add?
She's gonna be looking at me, I'm not sure.
Absolutely. Bring in the office on Friday.
I don't tell my whereabouts. I don't, I don't know what you're referring to, but let, let's be blunt. Uh, if I was in the office, it would name it Thursday or Friday, but if you have something to say, Scott, don't, don't let's...
No, I totally have something to say, I'm gonna let you explain the case.
You were not in the office.
You know, I wasn't, but we had multiple employees and a business owner of the township who were in that office.
Okay, is the business owner here, what was his?
You don't need to be there.
What was his name?
You don't know?
Okay, we don't know, we don't know.
Are you embarrassed by your actions?
No, I'm not.
You should be.
Well, again...
Alright, I'll speak for you, Supervisor Betler, I'm the officer.
No, you don't speak for me, no, you don't speak for me.
No, you wanna put everything in public, you and your press statement?
No, you weren't speaking for me.
I'm doing it right now.
You weren't speaking, you have something to say, say it.
Oh, it's covered, you shut up.
You weren't, you weren't there.
Right, hold on, that's...
No, you weren't there, there's been allegations on me on being there on Friday. So there's no one here that's saying anything.
You're not willing to say what you did or did you?
That has a concern.
Let, let me, let me discuss.
Why don't, Mr. Gallow, just air, air the concern?
I'm trying, I'm trying. So, Friday, you were in the office, and you aggressively, was my word, I'll use, approached our manager on several topics. Um, yelling, berating, um, borderline harassment, putting the township in a liability of a claim against you for that behavior. And it's not one person, there's multiple people there. You're right, I was not there. I'm just, I would like to know why. Why do you feel you can go in that office and act that way?
So, there was no berating, there was no, uh, conduct unbecoming. But I will tell you, if you would like to know what my primary purpose was, would you love to know?
I would love to know.
Alright, months ago, I asked our manager for insurance information on the dog kennel situation. And on Thursday, if you certainly want to listen to YouTube, he blatantly a- admitted that he had no time. Now, if any other board member over here asks for something, whether it's letters on the sign that we can't get straightened out or anything, I have been ignored, and I will be ignored no longer.
Is yelling?
So I was not yelling, in my opinion, I was not yelling, but here's what I got. In one minute, I got, I got this note, right here, I got this note, indicating, you have a problem, Miss Lemon?
I'm not seeing it, by the way, maybe you can keep your people straight, or do you have to mention it?
Do you have a problem with that?
Absolutely.
You seem not a problem with everything, but this is what I received after months of waiting. So am I disappointed in our manager? Absolutely! And I expressed that, but there was no, uh, that was, I was in that office for maybe five minutes.
So we had that topic.
And, and no one, no one raised an issue with me until tonight.
No one's going to.
Now, Archie, well, why not?
Because you're a supervisor and they're employees of this township, and you're truly...
They have a mechanism with which to pick up the phone and redirect.
I will say, I also heard it was very unprofessional, so...
Well, then, then this is relatively simple. To the extent that someone feels I was unprofessional, I'll apologize. I, I, I mean, I apologize if somebody thinks, but, but this has been a longstanding disregard for this supervisor in particular, so that's what this is.
Alright, so one, one topic, let's talk about how we watch the road crew come and go. We watch what time they punch in, what time they punch out, what they do, why they're there till seven-thirty in the morning.
And now we have a problem with the road crews.
You do, you, you apparently do.
No, I know, I know what problems I have.
You even know that we use paste for, you're pulling time cards.
How do you know what I know? I looked at the punch card, I looked at punch, I've looked at punch cards before. If they don't use, why are they still laying there?
I can't answer that question.
Oh, I guess you can, 'cause you're not even there, that's why you can. I guess you can, so a part of the role as a supervisor is see when people come and go, see what works.
This is the office behavior.
See what comes and works.
Anything else before we go to executive section?
Yes, Scott, it's called a hostile work environment, by your w- that way, so yes, you're correct.
You're opening the township up to some lawsuits with that behavior, it's all, I believe it. You're lucky our employees are understanding at this point.
I disagree with you entirely, you're not even there.
Alright, we're, we're going to executive section, session is nine forty-five, I guess.
Oh, for, uh, summer, summer help.
Your summer help. I thought we already said it was okay, aren't you gonna?
You probably take up, we're here. What, what are you doing there?
Do you need me to sound mad?
Oh, sure.
I'm just curious.
Actually, the chief stopped by to ask if he could help us through, you know, prepare the...
Did they give it to him?
We didn't, our team discussed it, the others didn't.
Cool.
You're not giving my phone number?
I don't know, I was just, I'll pay you. You're right, I'd like to see you guys, sir. You did, you did.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
That's my traffic light.
As soon as they fix that bridge, we get you straightened out.
Hey, are they getting ready to do pipe replacement across seven twenty-four?
Where at?
Uh, right here at Matt Light Street, there's a storm drain that goes across seven twenty-four into the canal.
Yeah.
And I see they now have it staked off.
I'll look at that. I figured it was marked for the pending...
Bridge.
Bridge.
Yeah, I, I, it just, something was on the line, uh, the stake is there with that plate bits.
I don't know. Nobody said anything else, but...
Because we've had problems on the drain for years, but...
Barry would know if we got a pay one call.
Oh, that's true, well, no, it was, it was state group.
We still, we still get them.
We still do.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and, uh, but you have that, uh, storm drain there at the corner of Matt Light Street on your radar?
It's on our radar. Yeah, we didn't forget.
I don't know, I'm thinking years to get this traffic light thing straightened out.
Just don't put one on my way door, I'll be okay.
So you, more water?
Yeah. Alright, I'm heading home. Good night, everybody.
Good night, have fun. Yeah, I got school and work. Oh, there was so much inconsistency in what these guys were saying. And, you know, and then Joey's talking about tax base, well, what tax bases are gonna be, there's no permanent structure. Okay, question, why you're up the roof?
Yes.
Somebody staked out the dro, the pipe one under seven twenty-four, right there at the Matt Light Street. The storm drain there was under seven twenty-four, you don't think about it? Well, that's why I just said to Ryan, but he said they were gonna have to call you to do the one call.
They did.
Oh, they did?
Yeah.
What, what did they do?
All that, it was just expletory because they are actually going to replace it.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, yeah.
So, that's what was on the PA one call?
Yeah.
So it is, it is a step in the right direction.
Yeah.
Because I actually, so I called the Burke County, the maintenance department for Penn Dot, Allen Temple. I thought, listen, this is what we have, pretty sure it's in your right of way, but you're probably gonna tell me it's in my right of way. And they actually came out and they did what they said they were going to do.
Okay. Yeah, they're saying, yes, ma'am, you have some, but they're not, they're not over that. But, uh, yeah, that, that whole storm drain has been sinking.
It's sunk a lot, like a lot, yeah. So, it's not that I was trying to farm out the work for them to do, if it was ours, I'd take full responsibility.
Yeah, yeah, no, no.
We gotta do it, but it's...
I, I just wondered why I was staked out, that is, I, kinda like you, you ever cut down a tree down in Mexico before it falls and kills on somebody?
Uh, like all the other ones did.
Right.
Well, they, I'll, thank goodness they didn't kill the body, but that was a bad night.
That car was pretty messed up.
I know, well, I had, I, uh, there it is again, you know, we couldn't...
Oh, they called you to cut up the tree?
Well, no, Penn Dot gave the two to three hour ETA for them to come out, one, their loader's sitting right down there. We were out already cleaning trees up, and I, I, listen, if you want me to come down here quick, I'll, I'll shove it off the road and be done with it, so, plus it opened that corridor up.
Yeah, yeah, I, I actually could come down while they were picking up the car yet.
I thought, oh, more like here. It's, yeah, and then this one down here at Ray Morin, but that thing there, that was a monster.
Yeah, well, I, I, I'm afraid that one's gonna...
I know.
Break off and kill somebody.
Kind of think like, I, it's a catch twenty-two, what do we do? If we go down there and do it, then...
They're off the hook.
They're off the hook.
And you're on the hook.
And then we're on it, and then we own every tree along there. Oh, well, the township did it before, they're gonna do it again, and then they're just setting the precedence for it. Um, you, you...
The, the, the guy that owns the house where the tree is, just had his property disavowed, and then the tree is way out of his pocket money.
Interesting.
I have pure elevated voices.
It's a long night.
Especially a long night.
So, I'm, I'm always hot, but it, it, you can tell it chilled out, it definitely...
Well, a lot of the people left, which was making room...
Body heat went.
All the hot air went. I thought her source were doing that, uh, thing with the hunting club out there, yeah.
I haven't seen anybody out there doing that.
Uh, dogs, uh, training?
Yeah, I haven't seen anybody. We were actually just out there today, that guy, you know? You get that replaced.
Ozzy, new truck.
Good, we're torn.
Do, do, well, yeah, the pickup, I, I haven't seen it yet.
The pickup's good, that was a much needed purchase.
Uh...
That, that other truck, oh my goodness.
Sell on the list of it?
Yeah, we are, I, I did, it's not listed yet, but it is, it has, it has to go up.
Right, it'll bring thousands, I think, but... What's it, is that, there, that's a hundred thousand miles on it?
Oh, a lot. It's a lot.
And choices by the owners.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of that, a lot of that time just idle time, you know? The other truck, though, the, the freightliner's good.
Somebody was bussing on me, why, why didn't we order Mac? And I said, well, Mac probably didn't make what we worked it.
Yeah.
I mean...
I'm talking, I'm actually totally, they gave approval, I started talking, not to buy, obviously, but, um, I started talking to Sean from, from Mac, started kinda getting the rough idea of what it's gonna cost, complete time and such. You just, you really do get the longevity out of them, and the maintenance isn't near what some of the other ones are. And to that point there, you're, you're recent.
You, nobody can complain about that, it was a ninety-nine GMC.
Yeah.
I mean, it's been in service for twenty-five years.
It's served, it's...
It's twenty-five years, uh, yeah, had a couple maintenance issues, but twenty-five years on a truck...
Yeah.
That we probably got out of what we paid for.
Yeah, that is, I gotta look, I have some of the receipts, but yeah.
Yeah, you know, I mean, you got, what, twelve thousand?
Twelve two, or eleven two.
Eleven two. Yeah, I'm thinking twenty-six years ago, but probably didn't actually cost much more than that.
Yeah, probably not. Now you can't even buy the plow for that.
Yeah.
It's insane.
Did you still plow with it?
Yeah, because it, it's...
Been fitting things.
Yeah, it was, it was right in between where it was too small for mine, like, the Big Mac. And then it just, it wouldn't work, it's just...
And that, is that the Mac two, the yellow one you want?
Mm-hmm.
Like, came with a plow?
Yeah. Yep. Yeah, the new paper enroller came last week.
Yeah, I saw the advertisement for the old one with new tracks.
What a fiasco that was. It's a shame, this new paper, it's like, uh, don't even wanna put blacktop in it, it's amazing, shaming.
Yeah.
I'll tell you what, though, from a, from a two thousand and nine to what this one is, the, the computerization to it is like, it's insane. It...
Go check it.
There's a, there's a lot to learn.
Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna imagine it has a lot more options on it.
Well, yeah, actually, this one here also has a, uh, it has the roll curb feature on it. You can kick it up and put a roll curb on if you want.
We can use that in some places.
Uh, yeah, a lot of places. Yeah.
Did you check for any delay?
No, no. Not yet. Keeps talking about it.
Well, Rock was talking about going this year too, but...
They're still chugging along.
Hey, stock market, who can afford it?
My generation, I'll be working the day of my funeral.
Hey, if it helps out, my mom will be greedy and she still wants three eggs a week.
I don't know that. Keep it going. Just all those, uh...
You wanna go for this one?
No, I'm good.
All those boxes down there, I guess, are adult hen.
Yes, they won't?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can I order soundproof doors for that?
Can you hear him?
Oh, my God.
I'm sure, that's why I said I need a lot of water, if anybody wants to go get it for me.
Well, she wouldn't have water earlier, every time I said, oh!
That door says employees only, so, I think that's, that's you.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be waiting. Okay, so can you hear him yelling?
Hmm, that's, that's what they call a security discussion.
Is that what it is?
Um, hey, real quick, we had the, uh, pre-construction meeting today, again, with, uh, CMS and everybody. They just, I don't know, I highly doubt what happened here, but CMS is having a pretty big problem with stuff getting stolen from them. They had a job trailer taken out from their last bridge project. Um, they do have GPS trackers and stuff on them. Well, they did, took, I guess, all the way down to Lake Kensington or something like that and turned around and figured out how to tracker, tried to shush it back, and then they called them on an LPR and so on and so forth. But I told them that, uh, I just, you know, let you know, but they, they, they've been having problems, so...
Wouldn't leave those big lock job boxes there and stuff?
Yeah. Yeah, and I guess they have, like, being enclosed trailers that they keep a bunch of stuff in, so... I told them, I said, I don't think you have a problem here, no, but who knows?
Well, I'll make sure, I should, I should check them all.
Cause I did, I, I did say, I said, the only problem is like where that area is at, kinda has a little bit of a history on it. By the way, Matt, they're looking to move in in sometime like beginning of June, like, something like that, so... Somebody keeps on moving that, uh, the Jersey barrier down there.
Today?
I don't know with what, it, it has to be a Jeep, my only thinking is it has to be a Jeep, the one that was like Stinger doors in the front, because it's right at that height. But if there's fresh, like, concrete that's taken on the Jersey barriers, and you can see where it slid. The Jersey barrier started as a full Jersey barrier, if you go down, you'll...
I just wonder how many people are down there doing this, as they're driving, and it all sounded blam.
I just wonder how many people are down there doing this, as they're driving, and it all sounded blam. And then they're like, oh man, turn around and get out of there.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
When's the bridge gonna be done?
They're hoping August.
August.
They're gonna move in the end of May, beginning of June.
Start. The tide for school start. And then they'll have to figure out how to detour around.
Yeah, Alleghenyville, and then they're gonna have to figure out one down here, and. I'm sure, you know, side road's gonna be closed because of the culvert that we're putting in, so, yeah, you can't get there from here.
Yeah, same way, I was just saying, the pandemic has two seasons. Winter, a disruption.
That's the part that kinda sucks, it's a necessary evil.
Oh, absolutely.
It needs to be done.
I just worry that morons are gonna try and get down over a road, but trucks.
I know.
And screw that bridge over, and then nobody's gonna be able to use it.
Only flip side to that is, by next year, they'll be working on that bridge.
Well, yeah, but.
Yeah.
You'll be here and a half without that, it's gonna be tough. I mean, it's gonna be a.
Yep.
A pain for me and my business.
Oh, I didn't think of that, yeah. Yeah.
Although it'd be easier to pull out.
True, won't be anybody there. It'll be interesting around here for a year.
Everybody in Sanford would be down here screaming for all the traffic.
Yeah. It's really gonna hurt us when they close that bridge there at Eschelins. Pulling out of, cause typically, a lot of times, we have to pull out of Silver Hill, cause South Reading's always down.
That's good, yeah, because we, we use that a lot.
So do we.
And it's like, you can't get there from here. Well, actually.
The only thing you need to do is go Wesley up the spec.
Yeah.
That's what we would, we would have to do, it's like.
But that's a torturous way to go.
It is, yeah.
But there's still. Going the other way, there's just no way coming back.
Yeah. Will make do.
I mean, I guess if you take Hammer Town over to, what is it, Turkey Hill, and take it over to six twenty-five, and then come back to.
Yeah, even that's pretty old.
Yeah, well, it is, it's, I just, yeah, and once again, it's, but that's what you call great roads, I mean, they're narrow and winding.
Just see if like Facebook Marketplace has a helicopter or something for sale. Just get one of them.
Get them to deliver.
Oh my.
Yeah, the other thing is, is if you're gonna take all these back road stuff, your top will be dry, uh, cold before you get to use it.
Hopefully we, uh, it's all during the nice hot summer. But yeah. But with the new paper, that won't matter much, because everything's power heated.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, it's, it's pretty.
Tacks me out.
It's nice.
Is, is the new roller a little heavier?
Much, it's huge, it's big. Yeah, it's really nice. It'll be, that, that roller will be really nice for like, when we do long milling patch stuff, like for instance, out there on Mount, like Hopewell. That roller would be head and center for that, but, you know.
That'll usually happen.
Yep, exactly.
Now, will the five fifty pull the paper and the roller? Too small.
Yeah, that's gonna have to be, uh, so the trailer that they're getting is a basically a big tag along. That we're getting, so that being said, I actually. The one guy, he's gonna, more than likely pursue his CDLA. Cause right now we.
Yeah, it will, will be pendle or ball?
Pendle.
Pendle.
I should really, if I had time, go after my CDLA. Try to think is, I mean. I don't know what it is, but like farm use, I can go drive a green truck and say, you know. But as soon as it's anything other. Yeah, the, uh, the new trailer actually has, um. The ramps are here. So you don't have to, cause the ramps now, for the trailer that we have, that, the yellow one that Bracknuck has. Oh my god, I bet you those ramps are like two hundred pounds heavy, or a bear to flip up.
I was thinking, are they like supposed to be spring loaded?
Yeah, they're not, they are ungodly heavy.
We haven't hung yet.
Yeah. Sit, sit there, you can hear it.
Yeah, right.
I'm surprised you're still awake.
It's a little past my bedtime, but.
Coup, I realize it's ten o'clock, I don't need to stay here.
Oh, exactly, it's like two o'clock, that thing is slow.
You gotta get up for work soon.
I just might as well just go down to the office. Start working.
They must, they must have fixed it, this, uh, seven day.
I think we need, I think we need a second use hearing, that'd be good, it's like a, just a double header.
Well, that, that hearing, that was like, they should have did that at workshop. That was too long for a regular meeting. Two hours. And, um, like ninety-nine percent of information they gave was already given at other things that came in there for.
I was gonna, I was gonna ask Jason if you put it in the, if they put in the bid to repaint the salt shed when it's done. So that, what, we opened up Pandora's box there.
Oh, the shit, the false head? Oh, yeah, that, I mean, we talked about that, you know, ten years ago.
Oh my god, I was like, we started taking the D one eleven off, I'm like, why did we start doing this? We ain't needed it though, cause it, like, I talked to Ryan.
You can get, you can get taller Jersey barriers, like, you can get six-eight footers.
Yeah, so we got a bunch of six by sixes, um, just a bunch of just. It needs a lot of wood, put it that way. But, you know, I said to Ryan, I said, give me a theoretical timeline, like, say we, next week, somebody sits down and says, here's the plans. Put them out, we're looking at, uh, we're looking at two snow seasons.
No, I, I don't know how this would look out for you, huh? They had an immaterial here, uh, last night from the storage already, you know, we have those boards between the reed beds. And they keep rotting out a lot, but they have material here last night, it's not plastic, but it's, it's stronger, and it's nice and heavy.
Is it almost like, like Trex backing?
It, like, it's not Trex, it's a to- totally different material.
I know what it is.
If you get a chance to talk to John Dean, eh, eh, he knows about it.
Wonder what it is? Can you see it, like, if you go down there?
Well, I don't, I don't know that he left a piece here last night.
Okay.
Uh, one of, one of them recorded a piece, a sample, because we wanna get this to replace the boards between them. Uh, I don't know how it goes for construction, you know, you know what I mean, I don't know. But it's manufactured, uh, I think right at Eastwood or something.
Really?
Yeah, Holy or something, yeah.
Look for this.
But that, that would be an excellent material for there, because it's kind of imperative.
Yeah, right now, we're just kinda doing it, dare I say, as cheap as we can, knowing that it's gonna get torn down. But when we go to look at a new one, you know, that might be a.
Oh, you got a trap was swollen up at, uh.
Or dry, the problem is with some of these DEP regulations now, you can't, there's only a certain.
I thought, I thought there was one time where they actually dumped it in one of the bags. And just used the, the backhoe to get it out.
Yeah, I don't know how they would have done that, I'm not saying they didn't, it's just to dump it inside.
Well, they, they dumped it in.
I mean, but there's a, I'll, I'll be honest, there's a pile up there now, that we have to get out of there, we just had a pile there, cause it's easier. Easier to load. But the way it sounds like, if you have over a certain tonnage, DEP's gonna want you to unload and load under roof.
Yeah.
Do, do you imagine how big a building would need to be if we needed to load under a roof? That, that, that is just going to kill me, it's powers, that's huge. You know, so, some places just simply don't have that room.
Well, eh, eh, you know, it's economy of scale, and that's why some of this stuff, you know, really doesn't work. I mean, we'd have five hundred school districts in sixty-seven counties. You know, the economy of scale says, you can get a, rid of a pile of administration by going to sixty-seven school districts.
Yeah, the other thing they're talking at some point here, and this is talking to multiple different people that are, whether it be Penn Dot or whatever. The salt sprayers and our truck, the control boxes, at some point, they're gonna be regulated where we can't touch them, I mean, you can touch them.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're really allowed to put down a certain spray.
Whatever your truck's putting down, that's what it's putting down.
Yeah.
So I'm like, oh, great, you know, like, for instance, we go to Quaker Hill, we put more salt down, because it needs it on them bigger hills, you're just gonna have to drive up and down the hill five times. The people are gonna be calling, what the heck, this guy doing, driving up and.
I, I told them there's a formula.
There is.
Uh, two hundred pounds per mile or something like that?
Yeah, I forget what it is. It was actually one of the only, um, seminars, there was, it was actually a really good presentation, there was a guy selling the control boxes and stuff like that, and the sprayers. But he had a really good presentation on it, um. Cause there's actually some states that have that, like Massachusetts, you go up there, like, this is what you're putting on the roof, and that's it.
Well, I mean, it's a good way to budget.
Yeah.
Yeah, two hundred, two hundred pa- uh, yeah, two hundred pounds per mile, uh, we got ninety miles, but we know it's gonna cost us, uh. A hundred and eighty tonne, they go out there and do it each time, or, you know, whatever it is, whatever it might be, but.
My only concern with that is like, what do you, say, what do you have winters like we just had, where it was multiple snow events of ice?
Yeah, well, if you remember, i- it's a cycle. Uh, I, I remember we had the Hammer was snow, when I first got the one, and we actually had to track. How many hours everybody worked, how many hours the trucks were out there, what trucks were out there, how much, how much salt we used, and then we got actually reimbursed from TMO.
Okay.
Because they declared an emergency.
It's also predictable, because it stops snowing whenever I buy a piece of snow removal equipment. Well, I could have told you this, and then I bought, I bought a plow, and then it didn't snow for three years.
Yeah, well, I have, I pulled a snow blow, and I've used it twice.
Buy, buy, buy another one.
That's how that works.
But, uh. Yeah, everybody's got their little Ouija board for figuring out what the stone's gonna be.
Yeah.
Even the fucker woman act is like fifty percent right.
Meteorologist is the only job, you can be wrong all the time with no repercussions, everyone just accepts it.
Yeah, it's weather.
Although, I think it's funny, when, when I was in, uh, I don't know, this town, last, uh, last year. Uh, I would get these little burps, rain starting in ten minutes. Lasting for thirty minutes, and it was like, oh, alright! They actually have better weather detectors than we do. Don't have to worry about snow removal over there. Doesn't snow that much.
It rains all the time.
Well, you know, they say that, but when I was there, uh, we call it drizzle, and they call it rain.
Yeah.
So it just, uh, you know, sprinkling for a couple hours and.
Maybe the real answer is they just time the notifications, like, it'll probably rain in ten minutes, cause it rains all the time.
Well, I, I remember during Agnes, uh, they, the weather forecast was raining maybe tomorrow, and it lasted a week.
My grandparents have pictures of some of that, like, some of the stuff that'll be back here.
It was kinda funny here, like, uh, Safer in a row, no water. Uh, you couldn't go up seven twenty-four though, uh, where Old River and Maple come in, or Church, or Maple. You, you couldn't, couldn't go through there. Uh, and you could come down to, uh. Like Annis Street, but you couldn't go any further, so it was kinda like stuck on an island. You know, but, and the water wasn't that deep, you probably have a high vehicle here to go through it, but. It got pretty ugly though, down at the Allegheny, and you could not do, uh, over a road, it's my heart. That one house on Over the Road, we walked, we waded through the canal to help get them out. Cause you couldn't get down.
Yeah, they had pictures of the gas station, that's now Sunoco, whatever it was.
Yeah, yeah.
Was it?
Bruno's.
Bruno's. Yeah, they had pictures of that, and I was like, you, you could pull your boat up and get gas.
My sister lived on a second floor apartment where the VFW is now.
Yeah.
And she was flooded out, and then it was six feet below the roof in my room.
The old home, gentlemen and ladies.
Wonderful evening.
Yeah, she was.
What's left of it.
Yeah.
I'll be sleeping before I get home tonight.
Can you go home?
So I'll be sleeping before I get home tonight.
So what did you first say, Patty, instead?
I worked.
You, you had to make, uh, Irish, like, Guinness Irish stew, or?
No, I don't, uh, bother making any cabbages and potatoes, yeah. I just looked at everybody's pictures of their pints of Guinness they were drinking back there.
I only told one Irish joke.
It was a good one, it was.
Uh, where did leprechauns come from? The guys get, the drunken elves get thrown out of the, the North Pole.
Alright, yeah, we'll do your first.
The drunken elves get.
Got thrown out of North Pole, that's where the leprechaun came from. But, uh. There's one, uh. These two guys are sitting in a bar. At, at a pub, and, uh, you get the keeper's there, uh, giving a beer, and this other guy walks in. He's down, and this guy, and he says like, hey, you look familiar to me. He says, you know, you look familiar to me. He said, uh. Where'd you run? He said, Dublin, he goes, me too. He goes, uh, where'd you go to church? He goes, St Patrick's, he goes, me too! So this goes back and forth, and finally, the guy sitting next to him says, the bartender, hey, what's with these two guys? Ah, he says, it's the O'Malley Twins, they're dumped again. We were in Charleston, and we were doing a walking tour.
Alright, I'll see you.
And, uh, Linda's always like way behind me, but, or she used to be, she catches up to me now, but, uh, I come to this building, and it was these beautiful doors and doors, and doors are two and a half tall. So again, there's two smart roll staircases there, and another set of doors, and there's two signs that say, no tours, no tourists. So Linda comes in behind me, she goes, what's this place? I said, I don't know, but how do you like this for southern hospitality? And his voice went, and he said, ah, just wait a minute. So he comes down, and he goes, welcome to High Burning Hall, the oldest Irish company country, gives a tour of the entire place. Took us back into the bar, and that's where I got that joke. He said, you have to tell these jokes.
And that's in Charlotte?
Charleston.
Charleston, I'm trying to think, cause I heard somewhere down south, and it's supposed to be like a really massive, like, celebration, it's a pet race day, it might have been Charleston.
Yeah, I, I would believe that.
And then, um, I know it's Minnesota or Michigan or somewhere like that, too.
Well, there's more Irish living in America than there doesn't apparently.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
I saw something posted somewhere, was it, okay, now all you Italians can be, go back to being Italians, St. Patty's day's over. Should we call an ambulance and see what anybody needs back to?
Yeah, right.
I just wish they had some more discussion on some of the stuff they decided here.
Which parts?
Like when they take the bills.
You know, it's like.
I would pull it back, you, if you pull them, nobody could tell you how many delinquent lean customers we have. Even though they have the paperwork that they're firmable.
Seems to be the common practice, every meeting, regardless of two hour additional use hearing.
Also don't like the fact that we don't get any information. Are they being responsible, or are they, did everybody just pay, and nobody ever talked about it? Well, you know, that's, that's not two people hungry, it sounds like the whole group's all in back and forth.
We're bouncing thirty miles.
Yeah, we're now half past bedtime, but it's way past my bedtime here.
We're past the three hour mark, that's good.
You know, we're talking. We got time with the half hour fifty bucks.
All right, we'll come back in the second session at ten twenty-four. We'll get some personnel issues, and some, uh, staffing questions regarding, uh, parks, office staff. So we have discussions regarding, and we want to, um, deal with our summer hire discussion.
So this would be, uh, proposal to resolution twenty-five dash zero nine, some help, uh, and we are proposing to employ, uh, Mr. Dennis Crawford in that capacity with a start date. Uh, no later, initially no earlier than first of April, and, and to terminate no later than the first November, yeah, twenty-five to zero.
Yeah, we could make a motion for resolution twenty-five dash zero nine.
I'll second that.
Well, I said, no, I mean, I.
Oh, I'm sorry, I need a motion, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion for resolution twenty-five dash zero nine to hire as stated for, with those stipulations.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call Mrs. Joy, ask Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Pitler.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Well, I don't know this. And I want to also mention to discuss about office personnel.
I'll make a motion, none of you are gonna like it, it is what it is. Will I have to say what it is?
You are.
I vote for suspension.
Oh, you have to name the person, and? For Sheila McCrue, McKean, I vote for suspension. Motion, a motion to suspend for how many days?
A motion to suspend for ten days.
Without pay?
Without pay. And if it occurs again, suspension with termination.
Well, you can't.
You can't throw it together.
It's one subject.
There was my one subject.
Your motion is suspension, dimmed in the light.
Just to clarify, is that including the current day she's been off?
I think it was on, was it on, how many days is it rich?
Thursday afternoon, you did it?
Yeah, I was just saying, it's Friday she didn't commit.
Thursday, Monday, Tuesday, were three in.
Correct.
If you wanted to start effective today, Scott, I can deal with that.
No, no, I'm asking, are we including the current, the really done, and it's seven to go, or ten to go today?
Technically, he told her on Friday, correct?
Thursday.
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 You sent her home Thursday.
So, so Friday was her, was her first day off without pay. And then it's ten, then it's an additional nine business days, and that's what you're talking about.
Yeah, okay, that, that's on, that's when it started, before we made any decisions.
All right, I'll vote yes, roll call Mrs. Joy.
There was no second, really, man.
All right, I'll second, so roll call Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
No.
Mr. Pitler.
No.
Mr. Gallow.
No.
No, I'll vote yes, I don't have to do any other motions.
Make a motion that we t- terminate Mrs. McKean, effective immediately.
We have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, roll call Mrs. Joy.
No.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Pitler.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
I'll vote no. All right, if there's no other business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Suspend, we want to, hi, from there.
Yeah.
Motion.
Yeah, all right, yeah, one other motion, my fault.
Can you see that?
So earlier in the meeting, we did discuss, honor of administrative assistants. So that's on the agenda.
With the fiscal assistant, is that correct? Or administrative assistant?
The administrative official, sort of responsibility at this point itself.
Administrative assistant with fiscal responsibility.
Correct, yes.
Yeah, so it's what's on your agenda, your other managers. Hold on, now.
Okay.
Oh, no, go ahead.
But, uh, I, I didn't see where anybody paid the bills, but like.
Yeah, we, we.
Harold.
Yeah.
Did it?
Yeah.
They can't pay bills when there's nobody there to run the quick books or know what you're doing or anything.
All right.
So. I heard that.
Any recommendations on paying?
We had the position initial listed fifty-two, um, the position of having a system, or excuse me, fiscal assistant should grow into sixty-two five. So, we'd start fifty-two thousand per amp would be the paper.
Excuse me?
Fifty-two thousand. And then we would make the decision when to. Change.
Now, now, Mitch, is she able to start immediately, or is it two, does she have to get her parents?
I, I would need to check on that, sure, that was one thing we did not discuss.
It would be a motion to start.
As soon as possible, right?
Yeah, as soon as possible. Well, it's not that she could start sooner or later.
She told you that.
Was she interviewed for us? So I'll make a motion that we hire, uh, the, on a probationary, ninety day probationary basis, at the Saturday.
Fifty-two thousand.
Fifty-two thousand per amp.
All right, we have a motion to, I have a second.
I'll second that.
Roll call Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Pitler.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Yeah, we have a motion to adjourn at ten thirty.
Yeah, we got, I need to down this.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Checks this on.
We're working through that process.